Good morning, everybody, and welcome to today's very sunny meeting of the Children and Families Scrutiny Board. My name is councillor Dan Cohen, councillor for the Woodley Ward and chair for this morning's meeting. Our meeting is being webcast on the council's website so that any members of the public that are unable to attend in person are able to observe us remotely. I will invite everybody to introduce themselves, starting to my left.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Oliver Edwards, representing Guyssian Roads and Wards.
Good morning, everybody. Nick Townes, representing school staff.
Good morning. Tony Britton, representing the Roman Catholic Diocese of Leeds. And I notice I'm down here twice. EA Britton, as a councillor, have been raised to wonderful ranks, and then as a co-opted member, which I am.
The minutes of the last meeting, I think.
We'll pick that up when we get to minutes, that's what threw me out. I'm looking.
Councillor Karen Renshaw, representing Alston, Robin Hood.
Councillor David Jenkins, representing Killembach and Seacroft.
Good morning, everybody. Councillor Jordan Bowden, Rounday.
Good morning. Councillor Lisa Martin from Rounday Ward.
Morning. Emma Flint from Wheatwood Ward.
Morning. Councillor Raymond Jones from Horsteth.
Good morning. Helen Bellamy, school staff representative.
Good morning. Andrew Graham, representing the Church of England ISIS.
Good morning. Councillor Angela Manaka for Berman Tuffs and Richmond Hill.
Good morning, everybody, and thanks for having me at today's Children, Family and Children's Scrutiny Board. I'm councillor Deborah Cooper, and I am substituting for councillor Helen Hayden, the exec board member for Children and Families.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Julie Longworth, and I'm director for Children and Families in Leeds.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dan Barton, and I'm the deputy director for learning within children and families.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Farah Khan. I'm deputy director for social care for children and families.
Good morning. I'm Phil Evans, chief officer of resources, transformation and partnerships within children's and families.
Morning, everyone. I'm Jane Bathgate-Roch, strategic commissioning programme lead in the children and families commissioning team.
Good morning. Councillor Jules Cecilwood, representing Wheatwood Ward.
Good morning. Kate Blacker, co-opted member.
Good morning, councillor Tim Goodall, representing Hedley and Hyde Park Ward.
Good morning. Councillor Ryan Stevenson, representing Hayward.
Morning, councillor Rick Downs, Otley and Yedon Ward.
Morning, everyone. Rob Clayton, I'm the scrutiny adviser to the board.
Thanks, everybody. Rob, just take us through items one through five, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, so just to run through the standard procedural items as we tend to do. Item one is appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, and there are none today, Chair. Item two is items for exclusion for the press and the public, and there are no items for exclusion today, Chair. Item three is late items of business, and today we have none. Item four is declarations of interest under leaders to council's code of conduct, and I'll just pause briefly to allow any members to raise any. I'll take silence as none. And item five, Chair, is apologies. We have apologies from two of our co-opted members, Marie Adams and Anas Kitu, and also, as noted by councillor Cooper, councillor Hayden's unable to make it, and councillor Cooper is attending as the exec member sub. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rob, and welcome to councillor Cooper. Thank you for coming along. So, we move to our minutes of the 29th of January, and thank you, Tony, for pointing out that you're twice as important. Rob, do you want to quickly just speak to that? Thank you.
Firstly, apologies. There's something, because that's an automated element of the system, so I'll need to check that and correct, Tony. So, my apologies. Well, I don't know what's happened is the answer. I should have spotted it, so I'll correct it.
So, the minutes of the meeting run from page seven to page, he says, nineteen in your bundle. I am hoping everybody has read through those previously. Were there any matters correction, apart from the ones, obviously, we've had raised, anything that needed correcting or raising from within those minutes? No? Everybody happy with them? Excellent, thank you. Somebody happy to propose them as a correct record of our meeting? Thank you. It's why you've got to sit there, you see. Amazing, thank you. And someone to second? Thank you. All in favour? That's passed, thank you so much. Moves us to agenda item seven, our first substantive item today. So, this is a further report on the child bereavement support services, which follows consideration at our board meeting on the 29th of January, where we unanimously agreed to bring this item back for further scrutiny today. One area that we didn't fully explore was around bereavement support services for culturally diverse communities. Due to timescales, you'll remember, I moved the meeting on. Perhaps in hindsight, we could have allocated and should have allocated a further five minutes, these to this subject. The officer report covers the items that we were speaking about when we brought the matter to a close, paragraphs nine to twelve. I thank officers for giving us that further content. So, can I hand over to children and families colleagues to introduce the report and respond in particular to the questions raised at the last scrutiny board in respect of the services' ability, the existing services' ability, to meet the needs of children and families for culturally diverse backgrounds who have experienced bereavement and loss. Colleagues?
Thank you, councillor Cohen. So, I think as was set out in the report, the children and families directorate did have to consider a range of potential savings from commissioned services as part of the council budget setting process for 2425. Having considered all possible options, the decision was taken not to recommission the Child Bereavement Support Service, and we've talked previously about what a difficult decision that was. As a consequence of that, the contract did expire on the 28th of February, and the previous paper and the paper which has been shared today does set out the remaining services that do exist in the city to support children and families who have suffered bereavement and loss. As you've said, councillor Cohen, there was a specific question, you know, and a specific request for the report to come back today for a little bit more further discussion. And, you know, in particular, I suppose, the extent to which the existing services do meet and are able to meet the needs of children and families who are from ethnically diverse backgrounds. I think what I would start off by saying and really, really want to say is that voice and influence and equality, diversity and inclusion are golden threads that run through the Children and Young People's Plan, which exists in the city for everybody who seeks to support children and families. And it really drives, you know, everything that we do, you know, all activity, all decision making. It's a key feature, as you can, you know, well imagine, understand, appreciate in terms of our workforce development strategy. And it's never something that we can become complacent about, you know, because we, the makeup of our children and families is constantly changing within the city with newly arrived families, you know, and we're learning all the time about the, you know, the cultures. And I suppose how children, importantly, how children and families see themselves and understand their own culture and their own identity. So, within that, you know, what we have been doing, continue to do, is engaging with services, also with public health as a commissioner, to really continue to understand the reach of our services, you know, and for the purpose of this discussion in particular, the services that support children who have suffered bereavement and loss, to really understand, you know, the extent to which they are and continue to meet the needs of children from ethnically diverse backgrounds. And I suppose an example of that is some work that we are undertaking with the ICB. So, really looking at the proportion of children from ethnically diverse backgrounds who do access Mindmate Wellbeing Service, and really having the comparison between how does that compare to the ethnic profile of children in each individual clusters. So, I suppose just really looking at the data, understanding the data, to satisfy ourselves that all of our services, you know, not just the services that exist to support children who have suffered bereavement loss, that all of our services are taking, you know, due regard to culture and identity. And I'll finish there for now. Councillor Cohen.
Any more officer comments? Okay. Colleagues, Jordan, you wanting to question or ask anything on that? Thanks. Ollie? I was just conscious that you were the...
Yes. Thank you, Chair, and thank you as well for the work that's been done on this report. I think it's, it's much better that we're looking at this not as a last minute item, but that we're having time to properly go through this. I've got several questions, you'll be surprised to know. So, the first one is from the point of view of children who are currently receiving support. So, this is on page twenty-two. And so, in terms of the offer from Child Bereavement UK, for the children who have been receiving support, could you talk us through a bit more about how this change is going to impact on their experience from the point of view of a child? I mean, I noted that there was talk about provision of in-kind support, for example, venues, and that discussions are ongoing. It'd be quite helpful to know where those discussions are up to. The second thing I wanted to ask about was the alternative and additional offers. So, this is on page twenty-three. So, there are a number of different services, and I'm certainly familiar with some of these. And I guess my question there is, have these services indicated their capacity to pick up what was being provided by Child Bereavement UK? Because linking on to page thirty-nine, looking at the impact assessment, it was identified that, that, for example, the demand for shorter term counselling provided by Barker, Gipsill and Northpoint in schools is currently unable to be met. So, I think it'd be helpful to know if, if those services have indicated their capacity to pick up what work is being done. And again, for us to know a little bit more about the conversations. And the final question, I'll do it in threes, the final question was about thinking more about the, the profile, the profile of the children and young people currently receiving support, and particularly from culturally diverse backgrounds. So, I can see there's, I can see there's some information in the report about the children and young people, but in terms of specific, specific ethnic groups, I can't find that anywhere in the report. So, I can see colleagues nodding. I mean, I did, I did look for that, and I think it would be particularly helpful for us to know that. I do appreciate that it's not always straightforward to get that information, and it can take time. But I do think it's particularly helpful, and especially when we think of some communities in particular where there is a disproportionate impact of bereavement, and where children and young people from those communities in particular have a disproportionate experience of loss and bereavement, whether it's parents or grandparents. So, could we have those figures as soon as they become available, please? So, we've got that, we've got that idea. Thank you.
I'll come in to begin with, and then I'll hand over to colleagues. And one of the reasons that I'm coming in really initially is just to be, just to be really clear that, you know, as we've discussed at scrutiny previously, the councillor and the directorate had significant savings proposals to make in 25, 26, 24, 25. And as a directorate, we do our best to achieve those savings proposals and to try to continue to deliver, you know, the same quality of service, the same level of service to children and families, but that is not always possible. And I just have to be really, really clear about that. And that is one of the challenges, you know, that we talked about previously, where we're having to, you know, make cuts, make reduces to services that none of us want to do, you know, and we're not, we haven't come into public service as a vocation to do that, but we have no choice because we've got to be sustainable, and we've got to ensure that our other services right across the board continue to exist for children in this city. So, I can't sit here and say that we will be, be able to deliver the same level, the same type of service when we're having to make such significant cuts. What I can say, and I can say it because this is Leeds and I'm sitting in Leeds, is that the partnerships that we've got in the city, you know, the, the commitment to think creatively, to think differently, to think innovatively, is, is, you know, is such that I've never experienced in any other local authority, and I've worked in many right across the country. And that is where we are able to find, you know, solutions as best as we can through that partnership approach. We can't do it on our own as, as a local authority. So, I think when you do look at the range of services that still do exist in this city, and they are way beyond, you know, the services that exist in other local authorities in other cities to support, you know, children and families who have suffered bereavement and loss. And I think when you look, as an example, you know, at the Leeds CAMHS crisis lane, you know, that's open from eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week, 365 days a year, the Team Connect, you know, which is open from half past three in the afternoon till two o'clock in the morning, Monday to Friday, six PM to two AM, Saturday and Sunday, the newly commissioned Children's Society contract, which does deliver one-to-one, you know, support for children. And I won't go through the whole list, but the report sets out, you know, the level of services that we continue in to have in the city. But I just wanted to come in just to be really, really clear that it's an impossible ask in some ways, if I'm being honest, to expect that we will deliver exactly the same, because that's not always possible, and I need to be clear about that.
I'll try and pick up your points if I've noted them down correctly, so you can let me know if I miss anything. So, in terms of those who received an offer from the Child Bereavement Commission Service, we've been in constant communication with the provider since we started to have these conversations, so they've been working with those families to either wind down their intervention, it comes to its natural end, or, as we've said in the report, there is still a Child Bereavement UK offer available in Leeds. It's not the same level, but there is still an offer. So, those children that need that specialist input, that more, you know, particular input, will still receive it. As far as I'm aware, I spoke to the provider a couple of weeks ago, they still haven't got all that locality office space. So, I suppose it's a plea to anyone here that, that can help them out in order to do that. But we are, as Julie says, working with all our other service providers across Leeds, and the landscape has changed quite considerably since I think the service was commissioned back in 2019 in terms of other offers that are available for children and young people who've suffered bereavement. And as we start to review some of those, so the Mindmate Wellbeing Service offer that Northpoint, Gipsill and Barker currently deliver, we're really looking at what, what does the landscape look like now? What services have we got available for children and young people? And it may be, we start, we've started to look at case studies, and it may be on the outset that children are presenting with anxiety, for example, but as you start to dig in, there's bereavement issues there as well. So, services are supporting children and young people who are bereaved, albeit more in a general capacity perhaps, rather than a more specialist capacity. But one of the other things we're, we're starting to do, and I know you asked for the data, we don't have that breakdown yet, we've managed to get an overview of our cluster breakdown, and we're starting to map that over about the service users that are accessing those Mindmate, Mindmate Wellbeing Services, is working with our ICB colleagues in terms of one of the goals within the healthy Leeds plan about early identification of school-aged children with mental health needs who are either in IMD-1 or within our diverse communities to properly understand who is, who's, who's accessing our services and for what reason. So, once we start to get that more granular detail, I'm sure that's something we can absolutely share with you. But I think, as Julie says, services are changing, but we've also got, the mental health support teams are starting to roll out across Leeds in a, in a faster fashion. They will support in a more general fashion some of these children and young people who may perhaps went to Child Bereavement UK, but their needs will also be met by some of our wider social, emotional, mental health services as well. I think the other one, profile, is there something else you asked and I've missed? So, the capacity to pick up as well, that's something as we go through this, that we're starting to look at, not just this service, but other services from both the local authority point of view and the ICB, where we've had to reduce or stop. What does that look like for the services that are left? So, that is the, the work that we're currently going through as we look through the Mindmate Wellbeing Service offer, the rollout of the mental health support team, as the Children's Society really starts to come into its own now, it's mobilised across the city, who's turning up at the door now and what, and what are their needs? So, it's an ongoing feast because of the change in landscape that we've seen over the last year.
Ryan?
Thank you. I also have three questions. Going back to the, the aspect of culturally diverse, people from culturally diverse backgrounds, I have no experience here, so I'm looking for some sort of live examples. I can kind of understand how the experiences of those culturally diverse, even with bereavement, would be different from the aspect of distance. So, if they are people who have family living abroad, then obviously there's a, there's a mileage issue in dealing with bereavement. I can see how that's different to everybody else, but I can't really see how bereavement is any different, therefore, for people from culturally diverse backgrounds in the sort of ordinary sense of bereavement. So, can somebody explain to me why is it different for people who are culturally diverse?
Thank you, Chair. There's not, it's not always different, a different councillor, Stevenson, there are lots of commonalities when people experience loss and grief. The main difference, if we look at it through a cultural competency lens, is there's differences in expressions of grief, mourning practices, burial traditions, all how we perceive end of life in different cultures. And it's important anybody who's supporting children, families who are, who are bereaved, who've had a loss, that they understand, that they're curious to understand those differences. And for children in particular, what we know is that, you know, children who are experiencing loss and bereavement, it can present in different ways. So, it's really important that people working with children and families are curious to understand those differences. So, that's the best way for me to explain it, through a cultural competency lens, that grief isn't always evident. You know, we talk about, some, some people express that emotionally, verbally, physically, others in other cultures, and in some cultures, that's, that's the norm. Even, you know, the, the timescales for burial is very different in my culture. You know, burial takes place within 24 hours that day, if preferable, and I know that's similar in the councillor Cohen's culture as well. And so, it's important that we understand that to understand people's journey of loss when we're supporting people. So, that's what, when we talk about meeting the needs of diverse communities or understanding, that's what we hope that all services in Leeds think about when they're offered. So, it's not having a specialist service, it's that everybody working with children and families understand those differences. I hope that makes sense.
That's exceptionally helpful, thank you. It's, it's useful context, I think, for us, at least with my next question, which is, it strikes me, therefore, that actually what we need is a service that's dedicated to understanding and has the time to understand those differences as well across the board, which leads me to my concern, really. On page twenty-three, the justification for cutting the Child Bereavement UK service is that there are six other services already at play in the city. But just reading the report on page twenty-three, each of those six mentioned, and a few of you mentioned today, there is the same sentence at the end of each description. This support, whilst general in nature, can seek to respond to issues associated with bereavement. Whilst general in nature, I guess the best example I could, you wouldn't want your general practitioner to support open heart surgery on you, perform open heart surgery on you. You would want a specialist, and you need that specialist to have the time to understand the deep complexities that go across everybody, and then, as we've just heard from Farah, also understand why you need more time than others. So, I reiterate my concern that the, the six providers, and by the way, page thirty-six also lists seven other providers who have already stopped Child Bereavement Support Services in the city. There are two others mentioned, St Gemma's, which, but they only support those who have family at St Gemma's, and then Leeds Suicide Bereavement Service, but again, only linked to suicide. So, the question would be, can we have a commitment that we could revisit this in a year's time and understand the direct impact of changes? We had circulated recent, at the last board, the impact outcomes from Child Bereavement UK, and I think if we are, we understand the context, factual context, but we need to look at impact. And I do think a commitment to reviewing this in a year's time and letting us see, we know what the data was before we removed the service, how many people have now had access to those various other services listed. It may well be that what you're putting before us is, is better or working the same, but I do think we ought to be able to see, see that data in practice. That's my second question, Chair.
I'll come back on a couple of the points that you raised, councillor Stevenson. I think, for me, there's something about trusted relationships and upskilling the workforce, and we have many a conversation about the pros and cons of specialist services. I suppose one thing is that children's needs don't sit in silos, and, you know, it's the point, I think, that Jane made, you know, that often you may have a child who is presenting with some particular issues, but actually, once that child's able to form a really trusting relationship with somebody, it can often transpire that what professionals thought were the presenting needs are actually very, very different, and they are intersectional. What we hear from children and what we hear from families is that it can be really difficult for them to tell their story over and over again to new professionals and professionals that they don't have that relationship with. So, we are committed, and through the LSCP, through the Local Safeguard and Children's Partnership, to upskill the whole of the workforce in terms of being able to respond to the needs of children who have suffered bereavement and loss. And we talked at the last meeting about a number of seminars, a number of webinars, a number of resources and tools that the LSCP have commissioned to upskill that workforce. And that's because more often than not, a child would rather talk, I think as adults, you know, often we'd rather talk to people that we know, and people that know us, and people that we trust, and people that we've got an existing relationship with. There's always recourse, you know, for a parent, you know, to speak to their GP, you know, about more specialist, you know, really specialist provision to respond to, you know, specific trauma in terms of children, and that, you know, that, this, this decision does not negate, you know, the recourse that parents and carers have got to do that. And as we've said, you know, previously in this meeting, children can still access the National Bereavement Support Service, which is a specialist service, albeit not to the same extent that they could previously in Leeds, and that's why I wanted to be really clear at the outset of this meeting, you know, that we can't continue to have the same level of provision because of the financial challenges that we've had. And also within the Children's Society, you know, the newly commissioned service, who are experienced professional councillors, who are experienced in supporting children across a range of issues, you know, they can still access that specialist support, you know, as I've said, for a number of issues. More than happy, you know, and scrutiny can at any point, you know, ask the director to, you know, to look at a particular area in more depth, and I'm always very happy to do that because we've got to be open to that scrutiny, and that's what we're here for.
Yeah, I think, I think that's really, I think that's really helpful and really, really sensible to look at, to maybe try to look at that in a year to measure that impact. Maybe we'll try and build that into our recommendations. Thanks for that. Thanks for that Julie. Ryan, was that your?
The final question Chair was just a quick one more on sort of the finance element of it. The justification given, in some part acknowledging it's a difficult decision to make, was that it was almost deduplication, that there are other services that can provide the same, so therefore it was a, not an easy target to pick, but a target to pick to remove the service. I subbed on a different suited board the other week, Strategy and Resources, the councillor Cooper, where there was a report on the Freedom to Speak Up Guardian. And the report on that mentioned that the Freedom to Speak Up Guardian, which costs about half the saving from children and families, proudly stands alongside six other routes for people to raise concerns. So my question really just going to be, as we look at budgets in future, are we looking at deduplication in silos, or does it work across the council? And if there's a saving in one Directorate that could be used to pop up a saving elsewhere, is that an open dialogue, or is it just a case that each Directorate's told they have to meet a certain budget, and therefore we have this silly idea where one justification and one department is used and then used differently in another?
I'll come in and Phil might want to come in after me. You know, as you can imagine, we have a corporate responsibility to set a balanced budget, and so we own that responsibility as a senior leadership within the council and CLT as you would expect. And I'm here, you know, today at the Children and Families Scrutiny Board as Director of Children and Families. And one of the considerations that we really did have to look at was, you know, our statutory responsibility and those services where we do have a statutory responsibility to continue to deliver them as a council. And so, you know, where we really needed to look in the first instance when we were looking at having to reduce services, were those services where we don't have a statutory responsibility. And whilst it's a really, really, really difficult decision, as I've set out at the beginning of the meeting, I think it's testimony to Leeds actually, that despite the fact that it's not a statutory duty to deliver services to children who have suffered bereavement and loss, that you can actually see in the paper that we've shared today, that we have continued, and we do continue to commission a level of service. It's not the same, I can't pretend it is, but we are still commissioning and investing in those services because we are committed to delivering early intervention and prevention across the board. So in response, I suppose to your specific question about do we look across the Directories for opportunities, absolutely. You know, we have weekly meetings as a CLT, and, you know, that's how we do our business in the council. I don't know if Phil would like to come in with anything else to add.
Just to add that there's a very, very robust process of considering savings reviews that operates both at the officer level and at the member level, and that culminates in probably the biggest political discussion of the council, annual budget setting, and I think it's important to reflect that. We consider other Directorates' savings challenges. We have a Start Chamber where external people from the Directories are brought in to review all those. But as Julie has set out, the backdrop for this decision was unfortunately that there were significant savings that needed to be made. It was absolutely not an easy decision to take, and it was not a decision that we took solely on the grounds of it being able to deliver a saving. I think that's evidenced by the fact that our original proposal was to early terminate the service, but we changed that decision on the basis of the feedback and the information that we got from providers. And I think what we've sought to do in terms of the report that we've now brought back to Scrutiny Board twice, is be very clear that this is a difficult decision, it is a decision that will not operate and move forward without impact. And we've tried to be clear and transparent to members of the Scrutiny Board around that because we recognise that. But the key thing, I think, is that we are continuing to do work on signposting, to try to do our absolute most to mitigate the impact of a decision, because we have to pivot the resource that we have towards the delivery of our statutory obligations.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows who I've got down to speak, I've got Tim, Jordan, Kate, Karen, then Helen, and I am, oh he's dangerous, I am mindful that we have a lot to cover this morning, so Helen's going to be our last contributor on this. So, Tim.
Thank you Chair. As I've said before, I'm a trained councillor with an S as well as an elected councillor with a C. I worked in primary schools and secondary schools as a councillor. Training as a councillor is intensive enough, and he's already, you know, takes a lot of work, it's a real specialist. And I would back up Farah's point, in the training as a councillor, you spend a lot of time thinking about cultural differences, it really is an important aspect of it. But on top of that then, to become a specialist in either child therapy, areas like play therapy, bibliotherapy, family therapy, bereavement therapy, takes a long time and you need a lot of expertise. I know you're aware of that, but I just want to really emphasise that, it really is an important point. As councillor Stevenson pointed out, you've got the loss of the other bereavement services mentioned on page 36. I'm concerned that the impact assessment doesn't say anything about diversity in terms of culture. I would have thought the impact assessment would talk about that. My concern is there's a kind of widespread loss of these services when you look at page 36 as well as what we're doing here. Have we already gone to the relevant department to talk about this? If not, can we? Because I think it's something that needs to be considered at a national level, there's clearly a lack of funding. And you would hope that the government was to do more to prioritise the funding in this area, to give more money to councils, to even make this a statutory service that did get more funding.
I suppose what I would say really is we, you know, every local authority, as you would expect, as you know, has got a finite level of resource. And then within that, the Children and Families Directorate has a finite level of resource. As I've said, we have our statutory responsibility and our statutory duties that we have to deliver in order to ensure that children have got, you know, effective help and protection. And then we have discretion, you know, in terms of early intervention and prevention, and the types of services that we do deliver in response to local need, you know, and that need varies across the city, you know, let alone across local authorities. But we have to set a balanced budget, and it's my statutory responsibility to do that as Director of Children's Services. And that's where these difficult conversations, these difficult decisions come into play, you know. And so in this instance, we have done our very, very best, as Phil has said, as other colleagues have said, it's not been an easy decision, it's not been a decision that's been taken lightly. There's been a lot of thought and a lot of discussion. And when we were commissioning, you know, recommissioning other contracts, you know, when we looked at the Children's Society, you know, and thinking about the ongoing level of provision, you know, albeit that it's not statutory, it's not a statutory responsibility, you know, we didn't have to commission the Children's Society, that could have been an additional saving, but we did not do that. We've retained that service because we think it's important to do that. But there's no easy answers, you know, we have to do our best, and in this situation I believe that that is what we've done, given the financial envelope that we have.
Has anyone had any contact with government departments about this to, to kind of emphasise that there is, that we are dealing with a kind of crisis in terms of bereavement counselling?
I have lots of conversations with government departments, you know, with DFE, with other DCSs, and, you know, there's a number of challenges across the system at the moment, which we've talked about regularly here, you know, in terms of services for children, whether that's the external residential placement, you know, whether it's SEND, which, you know, we have the paper this morning, so those regular discussions do take place. And they are meaningful discussions where we do have an opportunity to talk about the specific needs of children and families in Leeds, which again are different, you know, the diversity that we've got within the city does make a difference in terms of those needs. So yes, those discussions do happen regularly, we do use that, those as an opportunity to give a really true reflection of what it's like to work in Leeds and what it's like to try and meet the needs of our communities.
Thank you. Jordan?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's good to hear about the mitigations, and I'll be honest, there's some, I guess some concerns have been elevated, especially the idea of when it was initially commissioned. There are, you know, a number of alternatives now available where there weren't previously. I guess, and some of the questions and answers have already been done, I guess what I'm interested in is some of the comments in the report and how I think the transition might be going. So at the bottom of page 22, it mentions that the council can provide support in kind, most likely by provision of accommodation to support the service delivery, and that's in regards to Child Bereavement UK. Do we have a timeline on that, or do we have a set time where we can give that support to Child Bereavement UK? And equally, I guess in regards to the transition, it seems like a lot of, you know, there's going to be a lot of work with the schools now and maybe their ability to signpost, and it mentions on the top of page 24 in regards to this, kind of the schools update. So it says bereavement guidance, advice and resources are available for school staff along with information to parents and families. Is that guidance, advice and resources in place right now, or again, do we have a timeline of when that's going to be ready? Thank you.
In terms of the office spaces, that's just a conversation we've been having with the provider, so I can find out exactly where they were. We're also linking them in with some of our youth services as well, to see if they've got any spaces available to them. And as we spoke about, the Children's Society offer is now locality based, so is that somewhere they can go to? So I'll get a more recent update and I'll send it to Rob about what they still need. In terms of the guidance to schools, that's always been available, so that's just something that's available to schools generally.
Okay, there is an element of like, you know, we've been speaking on a macro level about all the things, so on a micro level to the service that's going to the child, how might that be different for them? So I'm guessing it would have worked in the sense of if school was aware of a bereavement, someone gets in touch with them, and then there's an outreach to Child Bereavement UK where they would then step in, is what I presume. Based on the fact that the capacity is now going to be around 20%, I think it's said to what Child Bereavement UK will be delivering, there must be a change to what's going to be offered because we're saying there's other services available now. So the point is, are the schools aware of all these other alternatives, is what I'm asking?
Okay, sorry, apologies. So the difference in what's available now, previously they would have went out to the school and they would have worked with the child at that location. Now because there's less capacity, the children will have to come to them, which is why we're looking for, if we can find some more local bases, that sort of reduces that need to travel. In terms of will people be aware of what services are available? I'm aware that public health are reviewing the bereavement pathway, so they'll be able to update exactly what's available now. In terms of the work we're doing around the Future in Mind Strategy, so the Children's Mental Health Strategy, we're making sure we've got that service offer mapped again so that people know what's available, because there have been massive changes over the last year, new services coming on, services ending, so that's all happening. It's all very live at the moment in terms of looking at what's available. So the Mindmate website is updated very regularly, so any new stuff will go on there, and schools have got links into that through the Health and Wellbeing Service that keeps the schools updated. So it's a continual process of keeping people updated about the changes in the system.
I think the other thing I just want to say is, as Jane said, it's something that we're constantly having to look at, and changes are evolving all of the time in terms of services and services delivery. But I think, just going back to the partnership that we've got in Leeds, you know, the great partnership that we've got in Leeds, I think, you know, the austerity and the impact in terms of financial reductions, it's not just something that we are experiencing as the local authority alone, you know, it's something that, you know, no matter which partner I'm talking to at a strategic level or an operational level, they're struggling with themselves. So as an example, we've got an event in the city, in the east of the city in May, and that's to pull third sector partners, voluntary sector partners, education, health, schools, colleges, early years providers together to think about family help, you know, and our vision for family help. But within that, what we've been really clear about is that we need to look at our assets, you know, and we need to look at our buildings, and we need to think about how we're using those differently. And so that's, again, I suppose, you know, with every challenge, we've got to find the opportunity. And I think there are some real opportunities for us in the city to think about what we've got as a partnership and how we can use that to best effect in order for services to be more accessible for children. And I think we've probably got a way to go on that.
I totally understand the financial constraints and obviously the rationale that you've set out in terms of the decision and the efforts and partnership working to mitigate and minimise the impact to children. But obviously, it's such a sort of significant thing for a child to experience and so niche and, if that's the right word, and obviously really variable in terms of, you know, the impact on the child, the circumstances of the loss, and, you know, the cultural variations that we've heard about as well. So, and it's been helpful to understand a bit more about how it's going to actually impact in terms of the child on the ground and the service that they receive. I think I would echo some of the concerns already expressed around the alternatives and fully accept that it's not going to be the same. And you've talked about partnership working and upskilling staff, so I'm just wondering, I'm not sure if this has already been asked, but to what extent some of these services have given a commitment to looking at upskilling staff in terms of being more expertise in bereavement, as we've heard, is particularly important. And also, I was going to ask about public health, which I think has just been touched upon, whether we know any more in terms of what their offer might look like in future. And also, in relation to the Children's Society, and apologies if I've missed this from a previous board meeting, but I noted that it's a support offer that's jointly funded by the Leitite Council and the ICB. So I just wondered, to what extent that service, that provision, is a sort of longer term commitment? Is it reliant upon the ICB continuing to fund it as well? So if they were to withdraw their funding, would we no longer be in a position to fund that and provide that service? How does that sit alongside public health, also saying that they're reviewing their offer? So what's the longer term commitment in relation to that as well? Because my other concern is that you mentioned about children opening up when they've got a trusting relationship, and that doesn't come from a crisis service really realistically, where they might have one or two conversations. It comes from the ability to meet on a weekly basis and form, you know, that trusting relationship over a period of time. And we know, because we've heard it so many times before at these meetings, that in reality, the offer more generally for children with any social or emotional mental health need, whether it's bereavement, which is quite specialist, or more generalised anxiety or other issues, is, you know, it's an issue, it's a problem, the children are waiting a really, really long time. So I just sort of wondered if you could help us a bit more generally about in reality on the ground, whilst we know it's not probably going to be the same, have we thought about some of this in terms of how we might respond in a short term but a more longer term, you know, basis sort of collectively with all these different services, looking at what these services are and what they can realistically provide alongside everything else that they already do, to fill that void as much as they can?
I'll come in on the point just about, I suppose, partners' commitment in terms of sort of upskilling the workforce, and then I'll hand over to Jane to respond to some of the other things that you've highlighted. So we do have the LSCP, so the Leeds Local Safeguarding Children's Partnership Executive, and I sit on that alongside police colleagues, Stephen Dodds and health colleagues, Joe Harding, and our independent scrutineer. And we now have education representatives on the exec as well, even though that's not a statutory requirement. But in Leeds, we've made the decision and the commitment that we want to recognise our education colleagues as a fourth statutory partner. What sits underneath the LSCP exec is the Broad Children and Young People's Partnership, which is a representative of all of the agencies and organisations that exist in the city to support children and families. So with the LSCP committing to invest in, as I've said, a number of webinars, so that they will be open to partners right so that they will be open to partners right across the city. And also a number of videos, so that if for whatever reason, partners aren't able to access the actual webinars, that there will be additional resources for them to continue to be able to access. And also, you know, additional resources, as we talked about, similar to those that are currently in schools. That's an absolute commitment from the LSCP executive, but also a commitment from the Children and Young People's Strategic Partnership, which sits underneath that. And we will be looking at the impact, you know, of those resources. And I suppose we're receiving feedback as well, because we've got to learn in terms of how have our partners across the city received those, you know, and how effective have they been? And I suppose this is the point that will never be done, you know, we've always got to be revisiting what we're doing and how well we're doing it. But yes, that commitment is absolutely there.
And Chair, if I just pick up the, the query about ICB's financial commitments. As you'd expect, the ICB are a major partner in relation to social care activity, both for adults and for children. And a range of colleagues meet with the ICB on financial matters almost on a weekly basis. The ICB, like the local government, receive an annual settlement. They don't get a multi-year settlement, so there is an iterative approach to agreeing what is funded and what isn't funded. If we set aside the recent announcement around ICBs and the future of ICBs and the challenge on their funding, I'm not aware that there is any, currently any view that the ICB are looking at the funding in relation to SEMH as being an area where there could be reductions. I think they absolutely recognise that it's a growing area of demand and it's a growing area where resource deployment is required. I think what I would say is there's an absolute rider on that because we have to work through the financial challenges that they have and that we have. But as I'm sat here today, it is not on my, my worry list of areas of ICB funding that, that could be considered for a reduction.
And just to pick up about that, understanding who these, where the children are and who's being supported. I think we've said, and it was pointed out in the, sort of the last line of all of these, that the support is general in nature. It's not, it is not a direct replica of what Child Bereavement UK have provided. But that's something, as we look at the, refreshing the Future in Mind strategies or SEMH strategy for children and young people across Leeds, looking at who's accessing the services, why are they accessing our services? What are these impacts of these funding reductions having for children, young people? This is where we work really closely with our colleagues from the ICB, public health and other partners across the city to understand. And as we review each of these offers collectively, even though most of them, you know, are ICB led, we're in that together to understand, well, what does the, what does the new service need to look like? Or what do we need to review, how do we need to review our service specification to meet the changing needs and demands that services such as a reduction in child bereavement will have on our other partner services? And that's a conversation we have all the time, but it's quite new to know exactly what that impact will be. But as we review particularly the, the one around about Mindmate Wellbeing and that offer, how are our services supporting young people? So I think it is, it's a continuous conversation we're having all the time as we refresh priorities and refresh how we work together in identifying children at an early point.
Thank you. I mean, I don't, I don't doubt your commitment at all, you know, we've heard a lot in terms of what, you know, the efforts and the commitment and I just think that, you know, if we can, just as, as you've mentioned already, Julie, think as creatively as possible in terms of what we can put in place for these children. Because my concern as well is that if you don't get, if you don't respond to the bereavement in a way that, you know, in, in a way that meets the needs of the child, essentially what you're doing is creating more problems and you kind of kick the can down the road in terms of them, them potentially needing more services. So it's like a short term saving that is counterproductive, if that makes sense. But thank you. I, you know, really appreciate the commitment and the efforts.
Sorry, can I, can I just dig into just a little part of Kate's question there? So that I'm not sure we've been fully reassured back on. Just on the ground with a real mind to pressures within children's mental health services. So from a social care perspective, what's it going to look like on the ground? Could we just get some clarity on that specific point? Farah, do you want to lead on that bit?
I'm not sure I quite understand your question. Do you mean what does the service offer look like for children right now?
Or what, yeah, post, post, not termination, first, post-ending of that contract with a, with a wide angle lens on the pressures within children's mental health services in general? In terms of timeliness, in terms of how is it, what's it going to look like? What, what's, what are the fundamental differences? How's it going to, where are young people going to be steered? How's it going to work?
So I think, I think the first point to, to say, councillor Cohen, is it's not been that long since the service ended. So it's really difficult to set out with any absolute clarity what that is going to look like. And my assessment is that whilst the contract has ended, there's not been a hard guillotine, if you like, on that change because the provider was a national provider of bereavement support and they are still providing some of that. What I think it will look like as we move forward is what we have to do, I think, is improve our signposting mechanisms, improve our referrals, so that where we get to is that the low level issues potentially go to one of the providers. But then we very clearly get a referral pathway that says where there is a potential for those issues to become more significant, that we get a referral pathway into age, Child Bereavement UK, because they still have the specialist provision that, that will exist. It's a little too early for us to say how that will look and feel in practical steps, but that's the work that we're doing now. But because it's a system-wide issue with lots of providers, there's an awful lot of moving parts in that. And so we've still got to do that work. What we will do though is, as Julie said, we're more than happy to come back and provide some further detail on what that looks like, if, if that's what the board would wish us to do.
Thanks. Thanks for that. Karen?
Thank you, Chair. Just following on from that really. The first issue I've got is the Leeds CAM's crisis call, because we all know what demand is on CAMs and the length of time for a normal referral. But if a child is in crisis due to bereavement and grief, they need something consistent and that's going to help them. So they don't just need a one-off call, they need something there to help them through that crisis. And then the second one is St Gemma's Young People's offer, but that's only offered to those who have had relatives in St Gemma's. And in my ward, there's only one of the surgeries that refers their patients onto St Gemma's. The others get referred from Levy or get referred onto Wheatfields. Otherwise, it's the waiting list for Wheatfield. And I just wondered how you expect children from East Darcy and Tingley to cope when they've got nothing after a, a sap bereavement to support them? And it links up really with the equality and diversity, which is South Leeds, East Leeds, West Leeds. That's on page 24. And then it supports families in the areas with poverty. But I think there are pockets of poverty in all wards and the way that children especially deal with grief, as well as the adults, is individual. So how can, how can you separate those in poverty from those not in poverty when it comes to grief? Because we all deal, like I've said, with it differently. And I think there needs to be a service there for the dealing with grief.
Yeah, I suppose the purpose of this report today was to talk about the changes that have been made as a consequence of our contract with Leeds Bereavement Support Service terminating. And, you know, as far as I'm aware, there's no other changes, you know, to the CAM's crisis call. You know, that, the service that was being delivered previously is the service that's being delivered now. And actually, anybody can access that crisis line. And I was, I suppose, reassured really when, you know, when you look, that, you know, that is available for children and parents between 8am and 8pm, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And I think, you know, in terms of the citywide resource and new points around poverty, you know, the Children's Society contract and the Children's Society service is a citywide service, as are, you know, I think the majority of the services which are reflected in the paper. So, you know, children do have, no matter where you live in the city, you do, you know, they do have access to, to those ongoing services. And you're absolutely right, councillor Venture, in terms of, you know, not just children, adults, you know, all of us responded in different ways to, to grief, you know, and sometimes really sort of, you know, needing to access or being ready, being in a place where you can access support. And it could be, you know, a number of months, a number of years actually, after you have suffered bereavement and loss. And the different types of bereavement, you know, and the different types of loss. And certainly I know, I chair the Youth Justice Partnership Board and we've talked there about the impact, especially on young boys, especially on young boys with mixed ethnicity, of parent separation, you know, parent divorce and using, losing, you know, male role models in their life, you know. And the, the impact of that loss, you know, which is a very different loss to the death of a parent, you know. But being really conscious that when we're talking about bereavement and loss, we need to think about it through many different lenses, you know. And I suppose for me, that's where the, the menu, if you like, of the services that we have got are able to respond to those different types of bereavement and loss in the way that I've just outlined.
Thank you. Helen?
So it was said earlier that Child Bereavement UK are no longer going into schools. The children would go to the service. And it just made me think of the situation in our schools at the moment, just with general capacity. There's just no slack. So if you have, excuse me, a bereaved child in a school, is there any more capacity? Because it's so stretched and schools are struggling to deal with the absolute essentials in terms of what children and families need. Is there any temporary capacity for, for a school that's in a situation where there is a bereaved child?
So I think if we've said we haven't got a replacement service for Child Bereavement UK, but one thing, and this is why the, sort of the alternative and additional offers are important to look at in terms of particularly the Mindmate support teams that are rolling out across the city to work at that early level with our school settings, which will also be on top of the cluster offer. So there's more capacity coming in. It's generalist, it's not bereavement specialists. But there will be that opportunity for more capacity to work with our schools. Because you're right, the schools, the schools are stretched as it is, but we need to look at all these offers, how they work in partnership, how they work with our schools to provide that specialist input when they need it. But there isn't going to be a sort of bereavement experts going in there because that's not what these services are. They can provide support, but they won't, it'll be more that generalist support.
Can I just come back and say, you know, following on from what Kate said as well? It's that those people where there's an established relationship already, if, you know, there will be part-time teaching assistants, that, that they're not specialists, but they may have had training. Is there any more capacity on a temporary basis for a school where the budget is, you know, when schools are in, some schools are in, quite a few schools are in deficit budgets and there's restructures happening at the moment? Is there anything that can be put in on a temporary basis where there are extra hours even for a period of time for a child and family that have been bereaved?
I've forgotten my glasses. I'm sorry. I can't tell if you're saying I can say something or not. I do apologise. It was just in relation to that question, we do have the Education Psychology Service that have good relationships with a, with a group of schools. And they offer regularly, when we know about it and there's capacity, additional support for, for children and for staff actually, within the schools where there's been a bereavement. So just to add.
And just to say, as well as I understand it, as Jane has just described, the Mindmate support teams is additional resource. You know, so again, whilst we're having to take and reduce services in one area, we're trying to mitigate that. And this is where we're trying to be creative, trying to work with our partners to try and mitigate the impact. So that is additional resource which will be going in to schools and clusters which previously has not been there.
Okay, I, I may have misspoken earlier when I said there was no more contributions. Very, very briefly, Emma then Ray and then that definitely, definitely is it.
It's more of a suggestion really, like I know that we've got a commitment from this government to put mental health worker in every school. And, and so obviously there's a crisis for our young people and there's lack of funding everywhere. But that's a commitment that we've got. So I wondered if, as a scrutiny board, could we write to the Education Minister and just kind of hold the government to account a bit about, you know, when will this be happening? When will it be rolled out in our city? What will it look like? Obviously, it's not going to be niche specialist bereavement counselling, but it'll be someone in a school that kids will be able to access, like where most of our kids are. So this is, that's a commitment that we've got and just something that we need to follow up and push for it to happen as soon as possible.
Can I, can we add that? We'll look at that when we get to the recommendations. We'll try and add that in, yeah? Okay, final one. Ray?
Thank you, Chair. As somebody who has almost a father when I was 10, I have never discussed that, how I felt about that with anybody. And Julie raises, the absolute point is that everybody deals with it very, very different. I would add, what we've not talked about is the extra stress that's been put on by the previous administration removing the widows' allowance after 18 weeks. Because my mother would have seriously struggled at that point. And I think that that adds a further stress into young people because it, it translates from your parents. You can see that they're stressed and that stresses you even more. And I think, much as some of this I'm not keen on, but to be fair, I think it's an advancement from what we were many years ago. So for that reason, I think it makes some sense where we are. I'm uncomfortable with elements of it, but that's fine. But there's a financial problem we have here and I get that. So that's how I've looked at it. But I'll be honest, I've never discussed it with it and I have no desire to either, to be absolutely honest. That's how I've dealt with it. But everybody would deal with it different. The other bit that slightly concerns me is the number of schools who have had the train, the trainer. We're 350 odd schools in Laissez from memory. And so, so there's about 100 schools have not had that, not had that. I think that's something that we need to address.
I'm very happy to pick that up to make sure that we're pushing as hard as possible to make sure any schools that haven't taken up the training can do so.
Colleagues, thank you all. Deborah Johnson, wrap us up on this?
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate you allowing me to come in at the end of the conversation that you've just had and information that you've, that you've gained from our colleagues here as well. I, I intend to be brief, Chair, you'd be glad to hear, because I know that this has been discussed at great detail, both here in January and also in council in February. I think a lot of the comments that were made were around the finances and the budgetary constraints. So as the exec board member for resources, I do feel able to respond to some of those, given that that's part of my responsibility. So first of all, I think it's important that we recognise that the council has had to operate and manage its services over the last 15 years of austerity. We have seen significant cuts to the council core budget over those last 15 years. And so this budget that we have just agreed in council in February is still under the previous government's allocation to councils as well. We did also, for the first time in 15 years, I have to say, receive more money from government than we were expecting this year with the incoming new government. I think the other point that I want to make about the budget and the sustainability of yearly funding as well is that we're looking forward to the comprehensive spending review coming out. And, and actually, we're really hoping that we're going to get multi-year settlements from governments that will hopefully, you know, come to an end of some of these yearly decisions that we have to make in terms of whether we are able to fund or not fund a service going forward for the next year. Or, you know, hopefully we'll be able to do that on multiple year levels. that on multiple year levels. So, in terms of the budget, I just wanted to make those points. I think the other point that I do want to, that I think's really important, is that colleagues have said we've got great partnership here in the city between ourselves, third sector providers of services, and we still have support for children in terms of counselling and therapy out there in the city that are being delivered today, you know, so please don't go away from this meeting, thinking that children are not getting, you know, what they need in terms of that support. If you look at Leeds in terms of other cities, we really are an outlier in terms of our partnership work, in what we deliver in children's services across our city, across schools, across communities, and we are seeing new innovation come out all the time through children and families. As you've heard, we've got the new offer that Julie spoke about from the Children's Society that is more general in terms of support for children, not necessarily specific around bereavement, but they will still be able to access support around that through the Children's Society as well. I just want to finish by thanking scrutiny members for their interest in this, both back in January and again today, and I'm sure it's a matter that is obviously close to your hearts and will continue to speak about in future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Deborah. Okay, I just want to echo that point, actually, thank you for that, we've had a really, hopefully everyone agrees, a really in-depth debate on this today, and I think actually what we're doing is drawing out bits that we didn't even touch on last time in any way, shape or form, so that was really helpful. So, I have three recommendations pulling out of this morning's debate. So, first, the one that was on the piece of paper, which is that we're requested to note the context of the report, and in particular, the additional commentary in sections nine to twelve, and then reflecting the debate and discussions we've had this morning, to bring back in twelve months' time, a review of the data as a monitor, to monitor the impact of this change on young people. And then to pick up the third to write as a board to the Secretary of State, do you want to get the exact wording right, couldn't you help me out?
I don't know if I have exact wording. I guess to ask when the promise of a mental health worker in every school will be rolled out in our city, and stress the urgency that that happens.
I would ask that we include something about the specific resource need for specialist bereavement services, because it is something that people need such intensive training for, just to highlight that to the government, that there is a need for that.
I guess I was thinking more just in a wider context, that, you know...
As I understand it, you're talking about the specific promise. I think we can, I don't think there's a problem, is there, in highlighting that, but I think we're talking about the very specific promise that's been made, pressing on the timeline. Yeah? Yeah, 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 I think Rob's picked all of that. We're all comfortable, everybody comes with all those recommendations, so I'll propose those, some second. Emma, thank you all in favour. Thank you very much, colleagues, that's carried, excellent. Thank you very much. So, quick, we'll have two minutes, because we're going to have a, we're just waiting for an additional officer, so a two-minute comfort break and possibly stretching to three minutes, and then we'll move on to item eight, send educational health and care plan review process. Just as an aside, I've been asked a couple of times this morning what my badge is, I will just say, so this is the Leeds Knights, my Leeds Knights button, Leeds Knights is our Leeds ice hockey team, who this Sunday won the National Ice Hockey League Championship for the third time in a row, not that I'm a big fan, someone said to me, did that, I didn't even know we had an ice hockey team, best in the country, another jewel in our crown. Can I also, say again, sorry? They do, and second team, and a junior team, next to Ellen Road, dare I say it as a Leeds United fan, it's at least as good as the football, at least, and we've already won that league, and we've already won the league, just got to wait a few more weeks till we win the championship too. Can I also, while we digress, can I say a big welcome to councillor Webster and Ben Marshall from Calderell Council, who are here observing our scrutiny function this morning, you are most welcome, and thank you for coming along. We move to item number eight, send educational health and care plans review process update report. As colleagues will be aware, a big piece of work we undertook last year that we've continued into this year is looking at how we as a council are dealing with the processes around educational healthcare plans. There is an accepted challenge right across the city around the speed of processing of the plans and ensuring we're dealing with them in a timely way, ensuring that young people get what they are entitled to within the timeframes that they should be getting it. I don't want to overly dwell, but I know that there are, that every councillor in the city, without exception, has a mailbox continually filled with parents of vulnerable learners who are terrified at not getting quite what they need in a timely manner. That's why we undertook this big piece of work last year. There is definitely progress, I think it would be trite to say otherwise, and this morning we'll dig into how we can ensure that progress is even more timely and get a really, a real laser-like view on where matters lie and what the progress ahead is. Can I welcome Gary Saul, Chief Officer for Learning Inclusion, now substantively in post, so welcome today. Who's going to kick us off? Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, councillor Cohen. So, yeah, just to say, as you've said, you know, the Children and Families Scrutiny Board has identified, you know, educational health and care plans as an area for detailed scrutiny throughout twenty-three and twenty-four, and that inquiry finished in April twenty-four. Running alongside that was the improvement work which had been led by PricewaterhouseCoopers and had been commissioned through the Directorate, and really all of that activity essentially is aimed at wanting to improve and recognising the need to improve the experience, first and foremost, of children and families who are receiving a service because of a child having special educational needs and disability, but also, you know, the need to improve outcomes for that group of children, you know, for our services to be impacting positively on them, and for us to be fulfilling our statutory responsibility. So, there have been previous reports at exec board, at scrutiny, and the report that comes today is a further report which just sets out, you know, the progress that has been made and is continuing to be made. I would just really finish by saying we recognise the need for urgency and the need for pace. I've been really clear since I've been in the Posters Directorate for Children and Families that this is, you know, one of my absolute key priorities to make a difference for children. We are making a difference, we know we've got a long way to go, and we're absolutely committed to ensuring that we do so.
You don't need to wait, just go for it.
Apologies, apologies. I don't want to say too much more really, because I think otherwise we're at risk of taking up time that will be important for everybody to ask for the questions which I know will be forthcoming. I would echo Julie's points that we are working very, very hard, lots of very good people within our teams doing their absolute best to deliver, and I'm very grateful to you, Chair, for acknowledging that we have made some progress and some of those key points in the report in terms of our successes today. I don't really want to go into any further detail now, because I'm going to otherwise just summarise the report, and I'd rather have the questions and make the best of the conversation this morning.
There is absolutely no pressure, but just, I'm very much, Gary, is there anything you want to add in at this point, that you don't really have to, but if you want to?
Get used to pressing the button. I think one of the main things is that there is a massive amount of change that needs to be carried out, and it really is about reforming the service systemically as a whole, because it's had so many struggles in so many ways that you can't just tweak one part of it, you've got to address a great many problems all at the same time.
Thank you. Colleagues? Thank you. Ray?
Thanks, Chair. There's reference on page fifty-eight to silks and special schools, which is slightly linked to a question I have, and trade union colleagues might want to help me out if they've got more live experience, but an issue was raised with me recently about practice for workers dealing in, not just in special schools, but in mainstream as well, but where a child has an EHCP, and it's around safe working practice. So, if a child has an EHCP that requires a one-to-one worker, there are instances where sometimes staff are supervising three children with that requirement in their EHCP, and there's currently no mechanism to, as I understand it, to report in terms of safe working practices. So, are we looking to review a mechanism by which frontline workers can immediately report a safe working practice concern?
Just, in terms of health and safety, I mean, ultimately, we as a commissioning authority provide the funding for silks and other schools to meet the needs, the identified needs of children through their EHCP, and if that provision has identified a level of funding to meet a one-to-one, then we give the money to the school and they put it in place. If there are challenges in relation to health and safety in response to that, then we would want to find out what they were and seek to address them. There is a forum, and you're right to point out, trade union colleagues, we do have a Health and Safety Education Committee at which we could raise those issues.
Yeah, I mean, if there is a particular issue in a school with that, then a risk assessment would be carried out. If an EHCP states it's one-to-one, then, as you said, the funding would be given and it's one-to-one, but if there are any health and safety... the funding would be given and it's one-to-one. But if there are any health and safety risks at all, then a risk assessment should be carried out for that, that child or particular class or whatever the issue is, to determine whether there is a risk or not, and then that risk assessment followed in the school.
So I'm just going to bring Helen in and then Julie, I'll let you come in.
So just, just to, just to talk about a situation where a one-to-one child might be working with that adult, but there might be other children around, and that does regularly happen, because children don't work in isolation, and so, and that adult would work with those other children just through the activity that they're doing, and that's probably not the kind of situation you're referring to, but I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, can I just make a quick point as well, because sometimes there, there is, even within schools, there's quite a misconception about this sometimes, that funding support that goes in to meet the need of an individual child rarely meets the cost of what it actually takes from the school resource to give a child one-to-one support. So certainly there are examples in every school where a child does have one-to-one support because they need it. In, in the vast majority of cases, I would imagine that the funding that the school receives does not, does not meet that resourcing cost. So it very often is, as you just said there Helen, a balancing act sometimes. So yes, children not working in isolation, but in relation to children not getting what they should be getting in relation to one-to-one, people often do misconceive that that resource is there for them to have it. It very rarely is.
Thanks. So just, so I'm going, Julie, who do you want to bring in first? Okay, so officers, you'll, you'll work your way round to address all of those.
Thank you. So in terms of one-to-one, if we've written one-to-one in section F of a plan, we have an obligation to fund the school to provide that one-to-one, and we have reviewed a number of issues where schools have said that wasn't sufficient to, to provide the one-to-one. However, it's, it's actually quite rare, and particularly very rare in, in a silk, that you would have a child with a designated one-to-one in a silk, it does happen, but the silks operate very much on a principle of trying not to make the child over-reliant, having one-to-one support and have a number of staff that support them. And it's quite common for one-to-one to be written in for parts of activities, so starting off a lesson or starting off an activity, at which point the one-to-one is then completely, that one person is then completely free to support other students.
I just wanted to come back to, I suppose, the specific point that councillor Stevenson made about if there are staff concerned, you know, if, if anybody in a school, a setting or an education setting is concerned, then, you know, clearly that should be escalated within the line management structure within the school, and ultimately it's the governing body and it's the school leadership that are responsible for health and safety on the school premises, and I am confident that that would, that that would happen.
And just to, in addition to the responses you've already had councillor Stevenson, for your information, I chair a board, Health and Safety and Wellbeing Board, at a corporate level where we have staff representatives at that, and that includes school staff as well, so there is that route to report in separately from going through their own schools should they feel the need to.
Sorry, I'm pushing the wrong buttons here.
Thank you, thank you everyone. So just to clarify, if, if as, where we have, for example, the silks and we're funding, from a HR point of view then, so the forms, I think it's called a CF fifty form, isn't it, the, the safer staff levels one, so we're saying when that's filled out, that's solely a responsibility of the silk, is it, or do we have some level of responsibility as a local authority provider?
I, I, I will let you answer the question, we are moving somewhat off-piste. While, I, I take the point, it's, it's health and safety, safeguarding, so I will allow, will allow it, but I'm very conscious we're specifically focusing on the processes around, I think such an important question, it needs answering.
I'm, I'm going to say that it's probably best that I agree to pick up with councillor Stephen outside the meeting so that I can give you a fuller response and, and not take up too much time today, if that's okay.
Can you hear that? Okay. All right, thank you. Rick? Rick's found the answer himself. Wouldn't scrutiny be quicker if we all did that? Yeah, we've done everything. Ollie, thanks.
The answer will just appear as if by magic. Thank you very much, and I would like to begin by acknowledging some of the things that have been done in response to feedback from us as individual elected members, but also us as a scrutiny board. So I welcome the fact there's a new casework address. I know that's something we've been talking about a lot, and it's very helpful to have that. I also note the progress with out-of-time scale assessments, and also it's good to read about the moves towards digital EHCPs. So those are all positives, and I welcome them, and I'm sure all members will welcome them, and the proof of the pudding, of course, will be in the eating, but that's, that's all very welcome. I wanted to raise an additional point, and it is related to a particular local issue, and Dan, I'm sure you know where I'm going with this. So my area, actually in councillor Downs' ward, we have an issue with one of our schools, Queensway Primary School, and the issues around the future of the school, and in particular provision there, and I think one of the issues that has been raised and which is causing parents and staff a great deal of uncertainty and a great deal of concern is not only around those children who have ongoing applications, but also those who have needs, or who may have needs, but the application process has not started. And given the relatively tight time scale, particularly for those families, and the way that this is, and, and the uncertainty and the worry that this is causing them, I think it really highlights for me how there are circumstances where it would be really helpful to be able to expedite applications. And I think whatever happens in terms of the, the future of the school, whatever happens next, I think there's a broader point here, that there's broader learning across the city. I, I think we need to have those processes in place for applications to be expedited. I do acknowledge there are resource issues here, and, and I do acknowledge it may be easier said than done, but I, I would like to, I would like to put that on the record as, as, as an idea, and also something that for me has been, has really been highlighted in my conversations with, with parents, and I, I would like it, I'd like to see it there across the city as well, so not, not only if it's, not only affecting my residents and councillor Downs' residents, but this could happen in other areas, and I think we need to be ready for that.
I'll just come in very quickly and, and then hand over to Gary.
Sorry, I'm going to be really cheeky, Rick just wanted to quickly add to that, and then?
Just to, just to reassure my colleague over there, this was something that when the potential for the school closure was made, I did actually ask officers the exact question you've asked, that's, oh, yeah. And just, just as, one of the parents contacted me today to say that after fifty-five weeks of waiting for an EHCP, they've actually finally got theirs done, and they were actually very impressed with the process and very happy with the outcome. So it, it would seem to be happening, but I'll let officers come back. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Downs, really grateful for that intervention which helps my answer. As part of the consultation, whilst we can't prejudge its outcome, we are, we have committed to essentially contingency planning to make sure that in the event of a decision to close the school, we have, we have taken the time already in advance to identify suitable alternative schools and to do the work with children and families to make sure that happens. Can I hand over to Gary to give a little bit more detail around how that's being done?
Yeah, so with reference to the particular school, we appointed a, following the public meetings, we appointed a single caseworker to all of the cases relevant to that school. So they've all been handled by one person, they know exactly, exactly what the situation is. We have expedited, as you were suggesting would be good to have a system, we have expedited all of the children that are in assessment for Queensway. Obviously, the, the one thing about expedite in any case is that it always then has the knock-on effect of somehow knocking somebody else further down the queue, but in terms of this being an imminent school, possible school closure, we have shortened the assessment time because we went straight to and agreed to assess for any other child that put an application in, so that saved six weeks, and then they were given priority in the EP allocation. So that was to enable all of the Queensway applications to be done within the statute of twenty weeks.
Thank you. Colleagues, anything else on that? Thank you, Ollie, thank you for that question. Any other questions on this? I have three. I'm quite content to let colleagues jump in before me. Okay, go for it Tim.
Just wanted clarity on page fifty-one, second paragraph, what, exactly what the six point nine percent refers to. It says timeliness, but is that the percentage of cases that are dealt with within a year, or?
Within the twenty weeks.
Oh, it's the twenty weeks.
Within the twenty weeks.
Sorry, okay, thank you. And the only other thing I was going to ask was about the, it says about educational psychologists being recruited by April, I just wondered if there's any update on that because we're getting very close. Does it, is it looking positive in terms of recruitment?
So we, we have a rolling advert for, for educational psychologists because we know that we need them all of the time. At the moment, my understanding is that the substantive team is essentially pretty much full, and we've been successful drawing ed sites in from other areas locally as well as far, as far away as South Africa, which is great. We are out at the moment to, to recruit for a principal ed site, which is proving more challenging. The, the additional workers that we've got the, the money for from April, we obviously, we have a rolling advert, so that's going on, but we're making some changes to that advert to, to, to make really clear that this is additional resource rather than replacing sort of natural wastage within the team.
Turns out that the international shortage of ed psychs is because we're recruiting them all to Leeds. Okay, anybody else, any questions before I, so Helen?
Yeah, just a quick question, just thinking about the future and when things are, you know, this, this whole backlog has been kind of made up or near enough. Are there any plans for any assistant education psychologists, you know, to form part of the team and for Leeds to kind of grow them?
Absolutely. We, in fact, we've had a big recruitment for assistant psychologists this year, and we're just in that round now of the new ones becoming available. So we've looked to try and, as it happened, I think there were ten available in this region, we've looked to try and get about six of them, can't confirm that as yet, but the idea is it's far better if we've got trainee ed psychs here, the percentage rate that would come back and work for the service is quite high, and therefore to grow our own is by far and away the best way of growing the service long term.
Thank you. So just my first question, and if at any point other colleagues want to jump in, just wave your arms. So one, one of the challenges that, that will, many of us will be aware of, is not just in the initial EHCP, but in the review process around EHCPs, where they're reviewed, they're sent off within the review time scale, and then what happens is schools tend to get them back nearly a year later when it's time to do the next review, which obviously isn't ideal. Is there any moves in terms of improving that timeliness so that we're, we're keeping the system more streamlined and more efficient as we move along?
There obviously has been a, a key focus on the, the twenty weeks headline figure and trying to resolve that for families. However, we are already, when we are designing and planning the, the service and asking for the resource to actually grow the service, that has got the annual review process in mind. So the additional officer capacity that's detailed in the paper is so that when the plans are then in existence, the, the casework officer caseload is sufficient to allow them to process both the reviews and the new applications coming in. The, the difficulty is, without that resource, it's very difficult to keep that, both of those processes in line.
Thank you for that. Second question, this is probably primarily one for Phil to lead on. At our last meeting, we had a conversation around the additional financial resource that was being brought in, and you weren't clear at that point also where that was going to come from. Perhaps you could just speak to us in a bit more detail around that. Obviously anybody can kick off, but just a little more around that if we could.
I'll come in, and if Phil wants to add anything, then he can. Absolutely councillor Cohen, so at the last meeting, we talked about the one million pounds which is currently being committed and currently being utilised on some of the things that are contained within the report so that we can drive that improvement. The remaining resource has now been committed, and that's really a balance of the use of social care reserves and the children and families budget, but yes, the remaining resource that is required to deliver the improvement plan has now been committed.
So, so where, where has that funding specifically come from? Sorry?
So, so there's two elements of it Chair. So one element of it is from a social care reserve that was agreed during the budget deliberations last year, where a, a sum of money was put aside, and we've had conversations with Victoria about using some of that money, particularly for the temporary resource, because the reserve's members will know is a one-off, so we've got, just got to be careful about that going into base. And then the second element is effectively about us looking through the Directorate as to where we can pivot resource to enable us to provide enough resource to deliver on these, given, as Julie has quite rightly said, you know, this is a significant priority for the Directorate for us to do, for us to do that. I would just add that it's not a static picture, because obviously as demand changes, there's a, there's an associated remodelling of the resources required, and so that's a continuing process. But as of today, as Julie says, you know, the, the, the funding will be found to enable us to make those commitments effectively from the first of April.
Thank you. My third question, and I apologise in advance because it's, it's going to sound fairly clumsy, and I hope we can draw the, the thread of a question out of what I'm about to ask. So really mindful that we have stopped, so far as I'm aware, new applications for FFI funding for inclusion. I'm aware that we've extended the timeframe where young people currently in receipt of FFI will continue to receive that pending they, pending their EHCP application. I'm aware that there are funding pots potentially available for schools to fill that gap for young people that will be coming into school that are waiting to go through an EHCP process that we know isn't working in as timely a manner as we want, particularly when they're not at a transition point, which is where the priority is being placed, and we get that. How's that working? How do schools, what should schools be doing to make sure that young people aren't being disadvantaged? What should we be advising parents to make sure young people aren't disadvantaged where they are vulnerable learners, where previously they would have received, received FFI, where in all likelihood they will get at some point in the future an EHCP and financial support? What are we doing to make sure that they're not disadvantaged for a few years while they're going through that process?
I, I think there's two distinct things. One is that the, in the early years, we have identified another fund in terms of, there is SENDIF already available to those settings, and we've created a SENDIF plus fund that the schools can apply for to support that younger end where you may want to put support in, and a plan may not be necessary if that early intervention can happen, particularly around speech and language. However, in the general school settings, they have a notional SEND budget that they already have, which is what everybody else uses all over the country in terms of supporting those initial few weeks while you gather the evidence for an EHCP. while you gather the evidence for an EHCP report. And I've met with a number of the heads where the, the emphasis is on getting the application for the EHCP started as early as possible, working with their feeder nurseries and the feeder primaries if they are a secondary setting, to get the application, uh, evidence gathered as early as possible. And I think there has been some myths that you have to have so many months of evidence. The legal test is that, is there evidence that an EHCP may be required? And I've stressed to the heads that that is the only legal test that we use at the multi-agency panel. So what we're needing is what evidence have you got? Submit the evidence that you've got and we will consider that through panel. You do not need to be waiting a year and a half to gather evidence.
So, so let me take that in two bits if I may. I'll take you, I'll take your last point first. So you're right that, of course you're right, you're the officer. Um, it's absolutely right that you can go to panel, but many people's experience of panel is without significant evidence of plan due review over multiple of times. Once it gets to panel, it goes no further. So there could be a really vulnerable learner. But because there isn't a sufficient timeline of plan due review, um, that, that shows a vul, a learning vulnerability, that it goes no further. So I take your point, but that doesn't seem to be what happens in practice in many people's experience and I include mine in that. So let's focus on that bit first if we could.
Certainly, yeah. I'd, I'd like to draw a distinction between what used to exist as panel and what now is in existence as panel. We established a multi-agency panel starting in the summer but running fully from September. So anything prior to that, one of the things that concerned me when I first arrived was the inconsistency of those decision makings. And sometimes some officers apply more than the legal test requirements. So currently, if it goes to the, the new multi-agency panel from September, it is regularly done just on that legal test. And I'm hoping that parents are, and schools are finding that very different, certainly schools that sit on panel are, um, I think astounded by some of the depth of the conversations that I had around some of the decision making. And I would encourage people to be on panel as observers if anybody would wish to do so.
Thank you. That is really reassuring. I think there are probably Senkos all around the city that will be delighted to hear that. I'm sure they all avidly watch our panel. So my next question, I just want to then just focus on the FFI piece. So let's just take a worked example because it's going to be easier. So year one, a child with an identified need, they're going to apply for an EHCP. Nor historically, they would have applied potentially, I've got, I'm hoping I've got my years right with year one, for FFI. Uh, and they would get FFI and may or may not have applied for an EHCP. We now know, of course, they should be applying for an EHCP and will so do. But there is quite a significant gap between that application and the actual getting funding through an EHCP. Uh, that the notional six thousand pounds uh, that we have within the budget would cover. And FFI is no longer there to do that. What is happening in that situation?
So in terms of FFI applications, the, the schools didn't apply for FFI at any particular point in time. So if they got an individual child presenting with needs, they only did their FFI applications once a year and they would then include any children. So there was always a, a potential twelve month gap before you applied for your next round of FFI.
Sorry, I just going to, can we just clarify that? Because my understanding with FFI is you could only apply for young people in certain years. I don't know if any of my education colleagues are able to help me there. The, the Leeds model, as I understood it, as someone who's been in schools for about twenty-five years, was that you could only apply, I thought it was the odd years, uh, which is how I would make, but it might have been the evening. But you couldn't apply every year.
That, that's correct. That's, sorry, that's what I was trying to say in terms of, in the FFI, you couldn't just apply for a child's funding. You had to wait until it was your FFI application. With an EHCP, you can put that EHCP application in now. You don't have to wait for a particular cycle to come around. Theoretically, if we can get the twenty week cycle working properly in Leeds where we're within statutory timescales, it should be much, mu, much better for schools, much more flexible for schools in terms of receiving funding early and at the right time. What we've got to do is get that complacency rate to where it needs to be. And to do that, we have to address the resourcing in the system.
So completely agree with that. If, so we're at the scrutiny board, what's the timeframe then for getting us into compliance?
So that, that's the million dollar question. Um, we, we, we know how much demand that we have now in terms of the number of cases out of timescale. We know how many children on FFI packages that we need to transition across or at least put through the process. And we know within a fair degree of, if margin of error, what the demand is likely to be coming in through the front door over the next five to seven years broadly speaking. So that is a kind of defined amount of, 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 of demand. We know as per Phil's comments earlier, that we've identified the amount of resource that we need on a yearly basis over the course of that period. And we've got the resource agreed for this coming year to be able to put that, um, that, that, that work in place. And we've tried to concertina it up to front load it because we know that we, we've already embarked particularly on the FFI transitions, as you know, because of the legal challenge from last September. So, so there are a few caveats around our ability to recruit and to onboard and to, um, find ed, ed psychs in particular if we're using an externally procured service. All of those challenges notwithstanding, we know that also the impact of having service uh, members of staff in place on, on month one means that we'll start to deliver an impact of their being in role five months later because of the twenty week process. So we are in the process at, at the moment of creating a kind of chart going forward that says, as long as we have all of these things in place, this is the impact that we should start, that we will have on our timeliness figures. We will need to review them on a, on a weekly and monthly basis in response to the, the changing situation around recruitment. Um, so, so we, we are working on the exact projections going forward of when we can start to see uh, changes in our statutory compliance. I would add though, and I'm sorry to go on, but this is really important. And it's right that we focus on the statutory compliance because that's with, with relation to our statutory duty. But there is another element here which sometimes gets lost when we're thinking about the, that percentage, which is the lived experience of children and families, which because of the changes and the positive improvements that we've made over the course of the last year, many, many families who had been waiting a very long time, and I thank councillor Downs again for the example, are starting to get their, their cases unblocked. So whilst we have a, 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 a list of children who are now out of timescale, which is bigger than it was previously, the amount of time that people are waiting i- is reducing. And the more we're able to recruit to those positions that I've described, the more quickly we'll be able to show an improvement in those figures. Um, I'm very happy to bring back, once we've got the calculations done, which are within the next two weeks, a bit more clarity around, um, when we can expect to see those changes taking effect.
Yeah, it's true. So if I may, uh, Gary, it, it's just to build on that point, that we don't know when we're going to be hitting that twenty week statutory timeframe. And, and the concern is that, that while we are failing to hit that, while there is in some cases fifty-five weeks of a wait, that young people are not getting the funding they need or more accurately or as accurately. And schools aren't getting the funding they need to manage very complex young people's learning needs. And we, I can't see that we're quite addressing that and I'm hoping you'll correct me.
Yeah, we, we have said to schools that the new applications coming through, albeit we do have a backlog of cases which we need to address. Um, the new applications coming through, the FFI team, when it reaches week twelve, which is that decision to issue a plan. So we are definitely proceeding with an EHCP. From that point on, we could agree the funding on, on the FFI criteria. It may then need adjusting when the final plan is produced with the EP report included. Um, because that depends on what is in section F that we have a legal obligation to make. But we can initially fund from that earlier decision to issue.
Okay, so for absolute clarity, because this is really important, and then I'm going to bring colleagues in. So a school can apply and subject, and in, after twelve weeks, subject to appropriate criterion being met, funding can be agreed from that point that may or may not be reviewed once the plan's finalized. Julie, I can see you want to come in.
No, I just, I think this is a really good example, um, of what we talked about earlier on in terms of, I suppose necessity being the mother of invention in some ways. And I think there are live discussions going on at the moment about how we as a director respond to the challenge that you have just given councillor Cohen, because we recognise that that is a genuine challenge and we want to be able to respond to it. I suppose I think it's a little bit premature maybe to, um, confirm that today, at scrutiny today, because I think there's just some more discussion that needs to go on because we don't want to make commitments that actually we cannot absolutely fulfil. But my commitment today is we recognise that that is an area that we need to respond to and those conversations are live in the way that Gary's just, just described.
Okay, so I need some clarity. So that, so what Gary just said wasn't correct?
No, what Gary said is correct inasmuch as that is something that we're looking at, at the moment. That could be a possible solution to the issue that you've just raised, but we need to do a little bit more work on that is what I'm saying categorically.
Okay, that's really helpful. I, I suspect, and I hope colleagues don't think I'm speaking out of turn, we, we would ask that we really get that nailed down as quickly as possible. Because there are, as everyone knows, there are young people, vulnerable learners who need that support. And the delays are significantly impacting on both the young people and have a wider impact on, on learning settings too, until we get that straightened up.
Councillor Cohen, absolutely. And that's why we are having those live discussions because we recognise it's an issue. We want to, you know, we're on this whole journey, we're embarking on the journey, we're committed to the journey, to ensuring that we can respond to the needs of children in as timely a way as possible. So absolutely.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up. Um, okay, Ray?
I'm going to give you the practical example. Year one, the child attends school, it has a speech problem. And that goes on for some time. Years, because speech stutters can disappear, except that. Year two, that still remains and gets to see a speech and language as a therapist. The, the child now is struggling at school because of that, that problem. Year three, it, the child attends some specialist second stuff, specialist stuff provided by the council up on Chapel Town and does an absolutely excellent job and improves that. But the issue still remains around possibly dyslexia. Year four, it's not moved on. The parent then pays for the assessment and sure enough, it comes back as she needs an HSBC. So realistically speaking, should we, we, we're only waiting three and a half years for somebody to get an assessment? Because that's what's happened here. And should the parent be forced into a position because the child is now losing confidence in itself? Because, and I get it because I'm dyslexic, it's now something, it's something, am I thick? And the answer to that is no. But that's not the child's view of it. So basically, the child then decides, I really don't want to go to school. I've loved scope until now, but hey, this is the problem. This is a real example. So how do we address that? And I know that that's a challenge and I know that's a difficult question, but I think it's a fair case to put to you.
Absolutely. And, and this is almost pre EHCP stuff, which is how do we support SEN in schools better? And part of the work that we are doing, part of the government's change programme that Leeds is a part of, um, is looking at what is called ordinary available provision. Called ordinary available provision. And we have got a team of people working on that with DFE colleagues and with some of our school settings to define what support should be available for things like that. So that the school's graduated approach to dealing with SEN, having people on the SEN register, that the support is done early at the right place at the right time. So that you should be able to access a dyslexia assessment. You don't need an EHCP to have a dyslexia assessment. That is something within schools remit.
Just to comment and just say, I think, um, I think the example that you've just shared there, to be honest with you, highlights the issues that we've got nationally in the system around SEND, which is, you know, in some ways, um, the EHCP understandably, because this is how the system's been set up, is seen as, you know, by a lot of parents and carers, again, completely understandably, as the only route to get their children's needs met. And that is nationally and locally what we need to move away from. We need to move away to be able to, as a system, identify when a child has got additional needs, be it speech and language or whatever it is, again, in that early years provision, and respond to that in as timely a way as possible without the need to wait for an assessment necessarily for an EHCP plan. And that's where we are absolutely committed to rebalancing the system. That's where we've got to get, um, you know, nationally, that in Leeds as well. And that's what we're trying to do.
And, and, and building on that, we, we are moving away from a diagnosis-led system and diagnosis-led settings because, again, we know there are challenges from our health, health colleagues in terms of addressing them having chance to get a CAMHS assessment or a new diversity assessment. So we need to move to a presentation-led approach, which is if you're presenting with those needs, that's what schools need to be able to address and that's where we need to have the focus. And so the things like our SENIT teams and the STARS team are moving towards that sort of model.
Thank you for that. Uh, last contribution I have is from Kate.
Thank you. Just going back to what we were talking about in terms of timescales and capacity. I just picked up a, a few, on a few occasions within the report, the issues around, um, complaints and how time consuming that is. And I also noted, because I think I'd asked previously when this was before the board, about tribunal hearings as well because I know how much work they involve for officers. And obviously that's, that's time taken away from actually, you know, undertaking the, the key work that needs to be done to move the assessments on. Um, and, um, identify provision and things. So I was just wondering, in terms of complaints, and it, it says that they've gone up. And is that, is that primarily in relation to not, in relation to timescales? Um, you know, how does that compare to when this was last before the board? And also, I'm just curious about the pilot, the DFE pilot as well in terms of the impact that's having around the mediation and to what extent that is reducing cases going on to tribunal? And whether we think that that's something, obviously there's, we need to await the outcome of the pilot, but whether mediation is something that we'll be looking to continue, notwithstanding what the decision might be in respect of the pilot. Um, because obviously there's a lot, you know, there's a lot going on, isn't there? And, you know, it's, it, there's, you know, there's lots of moving parts at the moment. There's, there's, there's lots of changes in terms of staff, you know, recruitment of new staff. I think you were, you're recruiting a, um, a complaints and tribunals officer as well. So I would expect that to sort of have an impact. I don't think there's a date there for when, um, when, when that's going to be appointed. But just curious in terms of how you see that, um, improving things, you, you know, in the sort of short medium and the longer term with regards to timescales. Sorry, there was a lot in that.
Okay, if, if I can address that as perhaps two slightly separate things in, in terms of, if I take the complaints first and then talk about the tribunals and mediations. With the complaints, there is absolutely no doubt that huge capacity of time is being taken up of officers dealing with existing complaints. And this is always the case when the services got into a situation where it's not statutory compliant, where families are feeling that they're not getting what they need for their pupils and that things are waiting inordinate length of time. And, and eventually you finish up with an avalanche of complaints. And, and the service has got to deal with that and get out of that situation. There's no, there's no other way of getting around that. So complaints will continue to be an issue, at least for fifteen, eighteen months, I would have thought, because of the backlog that is already there. Um, however, we have already appointed the tribunals officer. He hasn't started with us yet because he's got notice to serve with another authority. So that post has been recruited too. And that will help take some of the pressure off some of the officers that are currently having to deal with those complaints, particularly LGSO type complaints, which are even more time consuming than tribunals very often. In terms of the mediations and tribunals, uh, the, the change programme is a pilot for the DFE. We actually already implement that change here. So we were already using the three-tier mediation that the DFE- We actually already implement that change here, so we were already using the three-tier mediation that the DFE are wanting everybody else to use. So we already offer a meeting to parents to try and head off the need for a mediation, an official mediation, because there's nothing, if we are reasonable with families, that we shouldn't be able to resolve, that having a mediator sat there as a sort of go-between could help to resolve. We can do that ourselves, and therefore being proactive, as soon as we get now, part of the multi-agency panel thing is all tied up with this, is when there is a negative decision, there should be a conversation with the family from the office to explain why the decision is what it is, and then offer a meeting if they want with the setting and with the family, to have that discussion that you would have the discussion with mediation. It doesn't take away the right to mediation, they can still request that if they're still not happy after the meeting, but it's been more proactive about reducing that need.
Just to come in as well, I suppose it goes back to what Gary was saying at the beginning of this discussion, I suppose about the need for whole system change. You know, so one of the things that we have heard really clearly from parents and carers is how distressing it is when they really do not know what is happening. You know, when they don't know where their application is in terms of the process, when they're not getting, when there's a void, really, in terms of a response. So I suppose that's where it takes us into the other work, in terms of digitalisation, in terms of, you know, the work that we're doing, in terms of the process, where parents, carers, professionals will be able to see exactly what is happening. It also links with what Gary's saying there, which actually is about culture, you know, it's about culture and practice. We talk in the directorate, we're talking Leeds about having the right conversation with the right person at the right time. And the better that we can get at that, you know, and when again, there's clear improvement in relation to that, it will be, you know, because parents will not be sitting, carers will not be sitting wondering what is happening. So again, I just wanted to highlight that it is the whole system approach, it's about looking at our digitalisation, looking at our systems, you know, looking at the inboxes, again, that we've created specifically for councillors, you know, and others. So it's a whole system approach.
And just picking up on that as well, the biggest problem we still have within the service is communication. It is an endless bugbear of mine, emptying my inbox of an evening to see the number of times I get a complaint from somebody not answering emails or somebody not getting back to phone calls. And that is a cultural shift that we are addressing through training. We are addressing through recruitment. I am pleased, I've been in meetings with councillors where positive comments have been made about new officers that we are recruiting, and that is part of shifting that culture, that sometimes it's harder to shift the culture with existing members than it is to recruit new members with the right approach. So it's a mixture of things that we need to do to address that.
And I just feel it really beholding on me as director of children's services, and with the duty of care that I have for, you know, staff right across the directorate, to say that we need to recognise as well how it feels for staff who are working in a system which is a broken system, who are often trying to do their best, but don't have the capacity with the best will in the world to respond to parents, to respond to queries. It's not that they're not wanting to do a good job, it's just that they've not, you know, at times got the capacity and the space to do that. And again, that's where it's beholden on us as leaders, you know, to create an environment where they can be their best, and that's what we all want. We've got committed people, but we need to create an environment, you know, and a system where they can be their best, do what they want to do, which is make a genuine difference for children.
It's just disappointing, it's taken so much pressure to work towards fixing what you've just admitted and accepted, which we all accept, is a broken system. Although I have to say, a lot of the noises, noises is the wrong phrase, apologies, a lot of the direction of travel that's being shown out today is definitely reassuring. Dan?
Thank you. It was really just to echo what Julie was saying in relation to a concrete example, which is in the paper, but it's worth drawing out in relation to our work with the DFE SEND advisor, who we're now working with very regularly and very closely, and whose feedback has been sort of extremely praising of the current team, as well as new members who have joined, in terms of their appetite to learn and change and develop and move on. And so I think that's really important that we give that an airing in this forum as well. Thank you.
I think it's also worth stressing as well that the team this time round got every single Y6 plan issued by the February 14th deadline, instead of like the previous year where we were still doing it in the middle of June and July. So that was a, you know, it's a huge plus for the parents and families that have got their answers at the time where they need them. But it's a credit to the team that are working under immense pressure.
Yeah, I mean, I completely agree that you can see how these systematic changes will ultimately benefit the whole process and staff and children, the families. Just in terms of sort of what you're witnessing from the mediation system, and the benefits that that's bringing, as I understand it, I might be wrong, but that's once you've had your decision, so that's like to try and avoid tribunal. In terms of how complaints are managed, is there anything that you can draw on from that mediation process and use that to your advantage in and around how you manage complaints? Are complaints dealt with singularly by that team, or is it still a case of the council's kind of customer services, the wider team that deals with complaints across the council? Are they still involved in that, or is it dealt with within your team? And are there any sort of improvements in that complaints management process that could, you know, that you could benefit from you from in terms of how you speed up management of that and reduce the capacity, you know, the time that that takes to increase the capacity to actually get on with the work?
Yes, great question. We use every resource that we've got available, including the wider complaints team at the moment in terms of logging and monitoring the complaints. The difficulty comes in the time resource, in terms of being able to either deal with the work or deal with the complaints. And that is a juggling act for officers, because it is the service that in the end has to deal with the complaint, because that's where the knowledge lies. So again, part of the capacity issues, increasing the capacity enables us to deal with complaints more efficiently. But the key with complaints is to actually fundamentally address what's causing the complaint in the first place. So we have to address the communication issues. We have a number of complaints that are in because we are not able to provide the right school place that the parent wants. They're the number ones, they're the most prominent category that will finish up going to tribunal, because there isn't a resolution between wanting a special school place and not being able to offer one. So part of the work that Dan, myself and the whole children and families group are working on is trying to get that continuum of resource, so that you're not just jumping straight from mainstream school into a specialist placement. We've got to have a set of in-between resources that children can have, resource provision or a specialist SEN unit available for their particular type of need, reasonably local to where they live in the city. So that saves them having to have a special school place. That takes the pressure off special school places, which then stops us hemorrhaging money from the high knees block out into specialist independent settings, but that takes time to set up.
Board members, anyone else? No? Deborah?
Thank you, Chair. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to make a few comments. And I do want to start by saying that I think you've heard from officers this morning about a service that's been on an improvement journey, really. We came from a very difficult, challenging position, and there's been significant progress made in terms of how we are now processing and dealing with the EHCPs. And ultimately, it's about the children themselves, isn't it? The children who've got those needs that we need to ensure are dealt with in a timely manner, so that they can then get on with their education and their future lives with that resource in place. And we're all determined and committed to ensure that we do that in the quickest and best way that we can as an organisation. I do want to also acknowledge the work that scrutiny have done on this, and as an executive board member, having had, you know, several reports to executive board on this, which includes the work that scrutiny had done on that. So I really do want to thank you for that work. I think that it is imperative that scrutiny keeps their kind of hold on the matters like this that then come through to executive board, and we get the views and hear the thoughts from scrutiny board members on this. I know that this is an ongoing process, we're not where we want to be yet. So I would imagine that scrutiny will continue to keep a look over these things and keep informing executive board of its views. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so recommendations. So obviously, we have the recommendation that we've been asked to note and comment on the report, which recommendations is deemed appropriate, which obviously we have done. So we will note the report. Can I suggest, again, mindful of the training we had, that we have also, that we, the Children and Family scrutiny board, that we agree to continue to monitor progress on the provision of EHC support in Leeds in the next municipal year, with a view to a further update perhaps in six months' time? Are we happy with that? So would you be happy to propose that? Thanks. Ollie, it's a second. Karen, thank you very much. All in favour? Any against? Abstentions? That's carried. Thank you very much indeed. Okay, Gary, thank you very much indeed for joining us on that. Colleagues all, thank you very much. Thank you for the openness, for the transparency, straight answers to straight questions, it's what scrutiny loves. So thank you all very much indeed for that. Item nine, I think Catherine is about to join us. As if by magic. So this is the Early Years and Best Start and Beyond programme, and I believe we have a presentation to kick us off. Julie, are you saying any, is it officers saying something first?
I can come in briefly, yeah. So the Leeds partnership have moved to revise and expand what was originally the Best Start programme. This was aimed at improving outcomes for children from conception to two. Has been expanded, it's been renamed to the Best Start and Beyond, and that reflects the fact that it's now looking at children from conception to five years. And that work will be led through the Best Start and Beyond Alliance. I suppose just to highlight again, you know, that this really is, you know, set out in our Children and Young People's Plan, you know, the priorities around early intervention and prevention, you know, recognising, whether it was a children's social care review, whether it's MAMAT report, you know, the need really to focus on early years if we're going to want to break the cycle of inequality, improve outcomes for children, and, you know, all of the things that we've just been talking about in terms of identifying need and responding to it as a system. Earliest in the life of the problem, earliest in the life of the child. It's easy to say, but actually, often it is as simple as that as a system. How do we identify where there is additional need early? How do we respond effectively? So I'm going to hand over to colleagues now who do have a presentation.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name's Catherine Engold. I'm a consultant in public health and chief officer in the public health team in the council. And so I've just got a very short presentation to put a bit more detail behind the work that Julie has introduced. So I suppose the first thing to say is, it's been so interesting listening to the conversations we've had today, and the focus of the work of Best Start and Beyond is really looking at how we can create the conditions for old children from conception to age five to have a healthy life and to avoid problems developing and escalating. And the slide that's up shows the difference in life expectancy across the city. You can see from Hay Hills to Hunster, around 12 years difference in life expectancy for people living in Leeds. And on the next slide, it shows, the diagram on the right illustrates the factors that influence health. A lot of times when people talk about health, they think, oh, yes, the NHS. And the NHS is really, really important, but a lot of people call, well, you could conceive the National Health Service as National Sickness Service, it's there to support us all when we are poorly. But actually, being healthy and staying healthy is a result of where people live. And the differences in experiences we have in our life is what results in the difference in life expectancy. And then when we turn to thinking about 0-5-year-olds, there's, these are hopefully inspirational quotes to kind of illustrate the importance of why we do need to focus on children from conception to age five, because the foundations for a good and healthy life are laid down there. And the third quote on the slide is from a recent survey of primary school teachers who share concerns about children that can't, they come to school, they're not toilet trained, they can't walk upstairs, they're talking Americanisms, reflecting the fact that they've had a lot of time on social media. That's not all children, it's just some children. And the excuse of Covid baby is wearing thin now for children starting primary school. So the next slide looks back a little bit. So in Leeds, we've got a strong commitment to this work. As Julie said, we've had a Best Start plan for the last 10 years, focusing on conception to age two. And what this slide shows is the high-level indicators that have improved. The top three, what has stayed the same, which is in amber, and what is getting worse, which is in red. I suppose to caveat, the things that are getting worse, it doesn't mean the Best Start plan was a failure, they could have got a lot worse. And if we think about the last 10 years and what we have lived through, it's kind of not a surprise that some things are getting worse. But we need to make sure we keep a focus on making sure we make a difference. The next slide is an infographic showing outcomes. So this is from the Director of Public Health annual report in our shoes a couple of years ago, that you will have seen. But the point of this slide is to illustrate, we, in public health and with our colleagues in children's directorate, we very closely measure outcomes. And we know the outcomes for Leeds compared to other core cities and other areas in England. But also, what's really important is the difference of the experiences of children within Leeds. So if you remember the diagram that shows the factors influencing health and the ultimate outcome of 12 years difference in life expectancy, these are some of the outcomes that children face in Leeds. So this is comparing children living in the deprived areas of Leeds, that's a third of children, to the average. And I suppose to take one point of this infographic is, for every single measure, outcomes are worse for children living in more deprived areas, apart from walking to school. I know walking to school's not an outcome, but children living in deprived areas walk to school, children living in more affluent areas don't. So the next slide is a whistle-stop tour of evidence. We try and persuade people on this agenda through different ways. Maybe data's your thing, maybe inspirational quotes are your thing, but the evidence is really clear. So economically, the sooner we invest in children and young people, the greater return on investment we get. In terms of early intervention, there's really clear evidence around the huge level of development that takes place in the first five years of children's lives, and the foundations that lays for the trajectory their life is going to follow. In terms of prevention, there's clear evidence around when you increase spending on prevention, that has a direct correlation to reduce spending on children looked after and children in social care. And then an even broader vision, people will probably have seen the recent evidence from the Institute of Fiscal Studies around the impact of Sure Start centres, not just for the families that use them, but the families living in the areas around them, and the increased attainment of GSEs. So there's a really, there's a really clear evidence base for intervening early. And also, this is what families want. So the slide here is what families told us when we were consulting on Best Start and Beyond, what was important to them. So access to services, really good communication, peer support, more support postnatally, the importance of quality and continuity of care, housing information, and lots of concerns around housing and finances, which won't be a surprise to you, I'm sure. The next slide, I'm not going to read it out because we've had it in the pack, but it's just to link this work to the work of the MAMAT work that's happened in City. So Michael Marmot is a leading academic in health inequalities as a result of the social determinants of health. Leeds has partnered with Michael Marmot's team, the Institute of Health Equity at the University College of London. They've worked with Leeds for two years, and they had two areas of focus, housing and 0-5-year-olds, because that's what Partners in the City told us were most important. And these are the recommendations that the Marmot team made for 0-5-year-olds, which the kind of really key headlines are, move from looking at 0-2 to 0-5, as Julie move from looking at nought to two to nought to five, as Julie mentioned, broaden the partnerships, look at the wider group of people that can make an impact, and also, look at outcomes that children are facing, not just by deprivation, but actually also by ethnicity. I think sometimes people, there's a word, I can't think of it, like conflates, that's the word, conflate ethnicity and deprivation, when actually, we know from some of the data, the Marmot team have helped us break down, that's not true. And we need to have like a greater understanding of need and a tighter focus on that. So in response, the next slide shows what we're doing. So Julie mentioned Best Start and Beyond, that's the name we're giving to the work of nought to five. We're calling it an alliance because everybody in Leeds hopefully will want the best for children and young people. We want to work with whoever will work with us. And we have a board that will oversee that and take responsibility for moving it forward. So the board will oversee the delivery of the recommendations you've seen. We're going to develop a strategic framework, setting out really clearly the case and what we're going to do. Importantly, we're going to have an action plan. This is going to be very, very action focused. And we're currently delivering that. We're going to develop and monitor, develop and monitor a performance management framework that is really clear about the outcomes we want to achieve, and the indicators we're going to use to measure that. And where we can get the data, we will cut that down by deprivation, destile, and by ethnic group. We have given careful thought to work that we can lead as a board, as well as work that's happening in the city, that isn't under direct control or responsibility of the board, but is absolutely relevant to the board and needs to be linked up. So the children's centre review, the work to develop family help, and to make sure that there is a place there for discussion and linking up with the most senior people in the city. So we're going to develop it strong links, where we are developing strong links with existing programmes. The board will be the place where there are new and emerging issues that can come to the board, and we can consider how we take action to kind of address those issues. And also, we want to maintain a high local profile for Best Start and Beyond. And we need to think about a communication plan to do that. So the next slide, it has the outcomes. Some of these are in red because we're working on them now, so this wording will change. But these are the things that we want the Best Start and Beyond Alliance to achieve. So we want parents and carers to be well-prepared for parenthood. We want to support families to be healthy at population level and at individual level with that eye on health inequalities and differences with ethnic groups. We want to identify and support parents experiencing adversity early. Speech, language, and communication is really important. We want parents to understand how important they are in terms of education, and how children can learn really when they're in the womb, and for people to understand that and be empowered to be really active there. And then the ones in red will be better worded next time you see this. But we want everybody to access the early education that they're entitled to, and also to think about innovative ways that people aren't entitled to, maybe could become entitled to. There's some areas of doing, training up mums to be child-minded, so they're in employment, so they can access the early education that's available to people in employment. Attachment and bonding is really, really key. And we want children to be, have a good level of development when they start school. So all of our actions are trying to achieve that. So this slide just sets out the priority areas of action. They're listed in there. So making sure there's a clear start for life offer, parenting, health and preconception of the first 1,000 days, that's code for like up to age two, early years education and attainment, housing, speech, language and communication, oral health and healthy weight. There are underpinning areas, and there are linked areas of work listed here as well. And the final slide is how we will measure the impact. So I've mentioned the dashboard and the metrics that we're developing. We will keep a really close eye on that twice a year. We will keep a record of all of the work that happens, and we will bring formal updates to the Children and Young People's Partnership and the Health and Wellbeing Board, which the Best Start work is responsible to and governed by. So that's a whistle stop tour, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for that. Excellent presentation, and thank you for taking us through it so concisely. That's really appreciated. Karen?
Thank you, Chair. Going back to the very first slide, there was nothing on for the outer. It seemed to stop. And I didn't know if it was a postcode lottery, or, I've mentioned it earlier, about Alsey Robin Hood not being included, but it was all of the outer south of Leeds that was not included on that very first slide. So I just wondered if there were some separate figures for there?
Yes, of course, we can provide the figures for outer south. We've got the figures for life expectancy down to low super output area. The purpose of the first slide was just to give like a high level overview, to pick the areas in city with the highest life expectancy and the lowest, to kind of present a shocking figure. We can present those in any way, so we can always get the data for the outer south.
But there's a general increase in obesity in children throughout the city.
Yeah.
And that includes the outer south as well.
Yep.
So I'd like that to be incorporated within those figures. And will we all be able to have a copy of the slides?
Absolutely. And I can provide that data for you.
Thank you.
We've got really good data.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ollie?
Thank you very much for a very comprehensive and also concise presentation. I think the illustration of the bus journey from Haywood to Hunslet was quite illustrative in terms of life expectancy gaps. I think building on what councillor Wenshaw said, I would just ask that we have acknowledgement that, yes, there are particular wards and parts of the city where life expectancy is especially low. But can we also not forget those areas, particularly those of us in outer areas, where we have gaps within our wards as well, and where you'll see the overall figures, which are very promising, but then there'll be particular areas which might have figures that are not so far removed from other parts of the city with lower life expectancy. So that's just a general piece of feedback. The other thing as well, in terms of early years, education, and people accessing that, and ensuring that take-up is quite high. I know I've made the point before, and I'll make it again with my faith and belief champion hat on. Can we also, can we make sure that we're working closely with faith-based organisations to encourage take-up, and especially amongst culturally diverse communities, and really, really pushing the advantages of that for younger children? Because those first few years, you talked about the first five years, but even the first two or three years are absolutely essential. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That's a really good point. The work, one of the Marmot principles is universal proportionalism. So everybody gets something, everybody gets an intervention to achieve the same outcome. And your point about data, you're completely right. So take, for example, Awbridge, where I live, and councillor Cohen represents, we've got some really poor areas in Awbridge, whereas everybody else would think Awbridge is posh. And with the data we've got around public health, we can go to very small areas. So we can, we know the areas where there's more deprivation. With, to give another example, we commissioned the Noughts Nineteen Public Health Integrated Nursing Service. Every family has mandated visits, and the offer is universal. But if people have more need, they have a targeted offering. If they have even more need, they have a specialist offer. So we try and flex what we do to meet needs, to ensure everybody has a chance of getting the same outcome. There are loads of things we can't control, so that's why there's still a gap, but we try. Your point about faith communities, it's a really good point. Thank you. We're trying to work in the broadest possible partnerships. So I might come back to you to get some ins on that. That's a really great idea. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It's quite, clearly the case, if you have me as your councillor, you get to live longer. That's clear, that's what I've taken from the data. Helen?
Yes, just, I trained as a teacher, and my first part of my career was in early years. And I was astounded at how much more my children could do when they started school compared to the children I taught. So, you know, that's kind of just a single example of that, the difference that there can be. But I just wanted to ask about schools, being the school staff representative. So we have quite a few pregnant women who, they've all been teachers, in my experience, who have contacted the union. And they, that period from conception to birth, we know that those stress hormones, they go around the body, they impact the child, the baby, and the way the mind develops going forward. And I think we could do with maybe some more awareness or reiterating the need for that care for pregnant women in schools. You know, we have people ringing up, they haven't got a risk assessment. Not, that's not always the case. Or it's really rudimentary, it's not fit for purpose. And then that needs, your needs when you're in later pregnancy are very different. You know, schools are challenged financially due to years of austerity. But, you know, even not being able to go to the toilet when you need to be able to go to the toilet when you're heavily pregnant. So all of those things, I think, are really important, that we reiterate. So heads are aware that they need to put these things in place. It can be difficult, given the financial circumstances, but I think there definitely needs to be a reminder of the need for those things for pregnant women in schools.
I'm happy to come back on that. And I really recognise what you're saying. In Leeds, I am the CLT champion for the Women's Voice network. And we are looking, I suppose, at particular factors which impact on women who work within the local authority. And pregnancy, maternity, coming back to work after maternity, is absolutely one of those issues. So I think we can, you know, I think it's a point really well made. And I think it is something that we can take into our forums in the city with our head teachers. It's not just schools, it's not just the local authority. This is, you know, International Women's Day last Saturday. You know, these are global issues which affect women and girls. And so it's something that we've all got a commitment, absolutely. And we've got a, you know, absolute commitment to raise those issues and have those conversations in as many forums as possible as leaders. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Just so everyone knows who I've got down so far, in case I've missed you. Emma, then David, then Jules. Anybody else? Okay, so Emma?
Thanks. Just a quick observation. I think play was mentioned like right at the end. I just wondered, like, you know, we've got such a good play strategy, and it's such a thing that we do really well as a council. If it could just be emphasised like a little bit more, because there was, I think there was a line about, you know, children ready to learn at two and ready for school at five. But that sounds like, you know, we're expecting them to be kind of sat in uniform at a desk. But, and something about, you know, we know how important play is for physical and mental development, and how important it is to support parents in, like, learning to play with your kids, because it's not something necessarily that comes naturally. And it's something that our children's centres, when I, you know, I've visited, really emphasise. And obviously, on, you know, I love everything about the Marmot principles, but on an inequality front, you know, there's many, many houses in Leeds who just won't have books, who won't have toys, and won't have necessarily access to all those things. And that needs to be really thought through, because, you know, these things are expensive. Some houses have too much. Is there a way we can share those out? Like, we used to have a toy library in a toddler group that I used to run. And that was really important for some of the, it was just, that was for everybody. So just, yeah, just wanted to sort of pick up that play needs to be a really important thread through, through it all and nought to five.
Thank you, Chair. So like others in the room, I also come from early help, from an early years background. And I think absolutely play is a vital part of that learning and development. When you talked about inequalities, and not everybody does have access to toys, they're expensive, people don't have the room, et cetera, to, and the resources to be able to provide those. But this is a discussion that we were having in our, through the poverty work as well. So the work through the poverty board, looking at opportunities, looking at play, looking at resources. So there's been a fantastic citywide response to, for example, school uniforms, to the winter coat appeal. But we're doing similar with sports equipment, similar with the early help offer. So early help practitioners across Leeds, I've got some fantastic examples of where they've been able to get donations, large donations for pens, books, you know, equipment that some of us take for granted, that not every child has access to. And I really worked with third sector partners, where there's, for example, food banks, et cetera, to make sure that part of the offer is those donations, especially at key times, such as Christmas, such as Easter, Eid. And I know, so through the poverty work, that's been really successful, and the take-up of that has been successful, but absolutely has to keep on being on the agenda. And not only are people sharing, and sharing those donations, making sure that people do have access to those, but also that work around how to play, you know, and, because parenting is hard, and the sense, you know, you learn those things from your parents. Not everybody has access to family support in the community they live. So that's parenting, including play, including that very early start. And how we support parents is a key priority for our early, for our family hubs, for our children's centres, and for all our services in that space.
I just wanted to add really, that this is, whilst we're talking about play, the conversation we're having is a perfect example of why the Best Start and Beyond Alliance is essentially the best way of pulling together what is a fragmented system, with all sorts of brilliant work happening across the city, across organisations, within different departments. It's not necessarily about controlling all of the work, but it's about making sure that there's an awareness and a read-across, which avoids duplication, and tries to get a sense of coherence around what the priorities are, and how these different bits of work will speak to each other. So, you know, we're talking about send before, and we've talked about early years education settings, talking about play, to make sure that all of the work that's happening is aligned to try and target those key areas that are highlighted as part of the presentation.
Just coming, the conversations just really made me think of an experience that some of us had in December, just leading up to Christmas. So we have been in a partnership through our children's centres with Nesta. And through that partnership and working in the community in the east of the city, so the Compton Centre and the Children's Centre that's next door there. And I suppose the example I'm going to give, I think, just illustrates how it does all come together in a very special way in Leeds. So there was some work that was undertaken with children, with families, with parents and carers in the area, about actually what did they need, you know, what is it that would enable them to access the children's centre. And as a consequence of that, it developed into a project to establish outdoor play activity just outside the Compton Centre. It wasn't just any equipment. The thought that went into the equipment, which is aimed particularly around speech and language, and supporting speech and language and early years development. There's then a free flow through from the equipment, which is in the outdoor area, via stepping stones into the Compton Centre, into the library, books that are in the library, which linked to the play equipment, which is in the community. And there was a parent just by sheer chance who came to the opening of the equipment, who talked to me about the fact that she had a little boy who was on the autistic spectrum, who was non-verbal. And she said that as, and he had been involved in the project, and actually, his feedback and her feedback had informed one of the pieces of play equipment. And she just offered to me totally involuntary, she just said, as a parent of a non-verbal child, I often feel isolated. I don't feel that I belong. But she said, actually, here I do belong. You know, I feel like I've had a say, I feel like I'm invested. And it's certainly enabled me to bring my child here and to access all the things that are available in the community. And for me, that was such an example of, you know, working with, listening to the voice of those that have got lived experience, you know, how we pull together play, early years development, speech and language, and ensuring that the children and families that we seek to support feel that they do belong, you know. So that's one example, but we need to have a lot more of those and build on that.
Keep pushing no instead of push to talk. David?
Yes, my question really is about home education. So I think there's a prevalence of home education, but it's, I just wonder whether some children miss out education altogether because they're being home educated. And so do we actually understand how many children go to school? And the ones who don't go to school, what happens to them? And so I just wondered, in the context of Marmot, and as a primary school governor, where, what we can do?
So I suppose, in answer to the direct question, we absolutely know all of the children who are registered through their parents or carers to be electively home-educated. So we know who they are, and we offer them statutorily an annual visit, which is part of what the legislation says we must do. of what the legislation says we must do in terms of the check and balance around whether or not a sufficient curriculum is being provided. I think there's a really interesting question there which we might take away is, to what extent is the earlier point that Catherine was talking about in her presentation around trying to maximise take-up of early years entitlement, which might, if we're successful at it, have a knock-on impact around maintaining attendance rather than going out through EHE later on in a child's life? So I'm not sure quite what the work might be around that, but I think it's a really interesting one for us to take away and explore those links.
Yeah, I suppose I just wanted to take us back in some ways to the work that we did do with Nesta in relation to understanding why it was that some of our children's centres, as an example, were able to engage with children and families from ethnically diverse backgrounds in a way that others weren't and what was that about? So again, a lot of work, a lot of listening circles with parents and carers to understand what that was about, you know, some of it was about culture, some of it was about how education is viewed, some of it also was about, interestingly, you know, that some of the feedback was that we like outdoor play and actually we want to be outside with our children, hence the Nesta project. But I think as well, it's understanding and we do understand where there is disproportionality, again, thinking about some of our ethnically diverse communities within the city and then, and where we have to have that targeted approach. So as an example, our Gypsy Roma Traveller community, we know, you know, that as we look at our data in terms of education, that they are more likely not to be in education or to be in reduced timetables, they're more likely to be overrepresented in the youth custody service, I'm sure that is as a consequence of the fact that they are not accessing education in the way that we would like. So again, where, just some fantastic examples of our Gypsy Roma Traveller team and how they engage with those communities, how they build those trust in relationships and also, you know, often some of that can be just getting alongside parents, carers to try and resolve some practical things, you know, around accessing grants, around accessing beds, you know, in order to build that trust, but then, you know, accessing uniform, you know, but being able to speak to parents and carers, you know, and I think it's highlighted in the presentation that Caroline gave, the importance of education, you know, and the difference that education, you know, we know that a child's ability to read being a future determinant of all outcomes, you know, so I suppose we do know where there are specific cohorts of children within the city who are less likely to access early years and we've got a really, really targeted approach to that and we need to build on that.
David, anything? Okay, thank you. Jules.
No, I just, a couple of things just to pick up on really, just very quickly. The uniform, we've got uniform exchange all over the city, I've been involved in them, they're absolutely brilliant, you know, we set a lot of them up during Covid and they've continued and it's a brilliant way, you know, to recycle under our climate emergency that we've declared. And it would be great if under this we could coordinate more of that. I know with my children, I'd stopped using all the equipment that you need when my, my got to sort of school age and I was desperate to find somewhere that I could pass stuff on to that was still in good condition and eventually I did find somewhere through councillor friends. But if we could, you know, I don't know, coordinate all that under, you know, recycling, that takes away that stigma, we do the recycling, the reusing, which is brilliant, you know, yeah, so the more of that we can do under this, the better to share resources that we've all got, you know, that we can pass on, that'd be brilliant. So more, if you could bring us more info on how we can do that, that would be great. But just to pick up on Helen's point, just quickly about in schools, teachers in schools, I've had similar cases and cases where members have been, you know, teachers have been medically suspended because the risk assessments haven't been in place and they've had to be medically suspended while all that was undertaken, which is costing the school money then because they've got to then bring in supply teachers to cover while that person can come back to school. So I think we have got more work to do on that if we could just, you know, make sure that is done, yeah.
I think, I think that's a really excellent point. I didn't come in at the point when the question was asked, but actually there's an opportunity perhaps through our education, health and safety meeting with trade unions and our health and safety officers to develop some advice that we can then cascade out through schools. That would normally be for our own maintained schools that are subject to our health and safety governance, but we would want, for obvious reasons, to make sure that was cascaded across the city. So I'll take that as an action through the next meeting.
Was that you indicating? Yeah, of course.
I was just going to bring up that point, I mean, what Helen brought forward was, I was, I'll be honest, it seems quite shocking that heads could be really not providing for what our pregnant teachers are going through. Personally, it needs to be more than just a simple discussion with that headteacher because for me, that's not acceptable and especially with that, especially if it's a school that's run by the local authority. And if I could also piggyback off what councillor Flint was saying in regards to play and the emphasis of it, I experienced the benefits of play therapy. I worked in social emotional health schools, SEN schools. The thing though that I found, it was an amazing resource and it did absolute wonders. The thing at the time, and it's still the case now, the fact that it's a speciality sort of feels wrong, there's an element that this should be just really clear things that's shared amongst parents and all teachers and support staff and it's something that is, that is really missing. There are many amazing reception classes out there in nursery that do this, but there does seem to be a misstep, especially if those children haven't gone into nursery or potentially reception and then start at a later age. I think that's something that we should be certainly picking up on. Thank you.
If I could just come back in really on both points, the first one being around just the interest of balance really and proportion in terms of our headteachers, I wouldn't want this group or anyone watching to be walking away with the impression that it was custom and practice in the city, not to, not to, not to take account of the needs of pregnant teachers in schools or any other staff for that matter. I think that's really, really important. There's obviously an opportunity to develop some good practice advice and guidance, which we'll do, but that can't be on the basis that we're assuming that there isn't already lots of very, very good practice across the city, was the first point. And the second point really in response to the bit around, I suppose consistency really, so a consistency of practice across settings, and I think one of the things we want to develop as part of the Best Start and Beyond Alliance is that community of practice that we can support through our early years education consultancy team within the school improvement team to make sure that we've got that kind of ability to cross-fertilise where there are really good examples of practice across the city. So hopefully we'll pick that up and it's a really good point, well made.
And Kayleigh?
Just to say, thanks for bringing that proportionality in that first section because I'm not very democratic sometimes.
And Kayleigh then, Helen.
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to say thank you to Catherine just for bringing quite a detailed and great review and all, you know, everything was really great. You know, I'm just wondering with all this report, especially regards to the healthy start, whether, you know, it's just a comment that it would be great to see with the changes in April to the, is it the tax credits, it would be great to see how that impacts in terms of food and everything available to those that are already deprived, whether there's going to be a change in terms of them moving into universal credit and how that could possibly impact on the rest of the services. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody want to give us a brief answer?
Just very briefly, I suppose it's just to say that we really do understand the impact of poverty on children, you know, and on their outcomes and I think there's a lot of work going on in terms of how we poverty-proof our practice, you know, and the relationship between, as we've talked about here previously, poverty, you know, neglect, you know, and sometimes the need for children to become looked after, you know, so absolutely. But first and foremost, this is about supporting families that are struggling in adversity and we need to recognise it as such, so absolutely.
Helen.
Yeah, just to say, I mean, obviously this is a handful, but I still think it's important and the proportionality aspect of it, you know, is fully accepted. I think the biggest, the reason more the women are ringing up more is more to do with mental health, because it's easier to ask for, you know, will I need somebody, you know, I'll just nip in next door if I need to leave the classroom, but I think it's that understanding of the mental health aspect and if you, it's a really busy, stressful job as it is, and I think it's that side of it that potentially headteachers are not, or some headteachers are not aware of and the impact that can have on the, on the mum, but also on the baby.
Yeah, absolutely. I think often it's about creating the space for women to feel empowered to talk about the impact of specific issues on them, you know, menopause as an example, you know, is something that we don't often talk about, you know, but the number of women going through the menopause who, you know, where that impacts significantly on them in the workplace. So I think there's something about how do we empower, how do we create this space to be able to talk about this and to be able to respond to the needs of women and for it to be okay and acceptable, you know, that there are these impacts on women and that it's right and proper that we do be discussing them right across the partnership.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to bring Debra in in just a second. Can colleagues just have, sorry, I'm bringing Emma in before I do that, no, I'm not, you would never go to an auction. Can colleagues just, just be thinking about what our recommendations may well be on this item if we're going, if there's anything over and above noting the report? Debra.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm really conscious of time, so I'll be really brief. I really support this approach and as looking and working as a partnership around this, it's really clear that we need to all work together to improve the inequality that we see in our city. Those slides were really stark, that actually, you know, somebody's life is less if you are born in a different part of our city. So we all need to work to improve those things together and I'm really pleased to see this positive report come forward about how we can start to bring those things together to make those changes that we all want to see.
Thank you very much. So, recommendation that we're about to vote is to note and support the report. Anybody want to add anything into those recommendations that we've voted on? Anybody?
Just a brief. I'm too obvious.
Yeah, we'll make sure we, yes, we'll make sure that we, we note its impact on the whole city, yeah, within the recommendations. Anything else we need to capture? No? Somebody to propose that then please? Thank you. I'll second it. Great, all in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried, colleagues, thank you very much. That brings us to item 10, the work programme. Mr Clayton, sir.
Thank you, Chair, obviously conscious of time also. So just really to bring in to the formal meeting some of the discussion in the pre-meeting, Chair, so just slight adjustments to the work programme for April, so the school support staff item that was previously programmed is now going to be deferred pending national developments, legislative developments. Similarly, the asylum, the impact of asylum on children and young people also is to be deferred and councillor Martin, I can keep you updated on that given your interest in it. And then lastly, we have a further education working group on the 31st of March, which is in person at 1 o'clock. And lastly again, sorry, Chair, the dates for the next municipal year will be circulated as a priority this week, so you all have them. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So I move that those dates are approved, someone happy to second that for me? Jordan, I think it's a change, all in favour? Against? Abstentions? That's carried, thank you very much. Next meeting, 28th of April 2025, 1.30, pre-meets for all board members at 1.15. And can I thank all colleagues and all officers for all your contributions today, really, really helpful meeting. Thank you very much indeed, I'll close the meeting right there. Thank you.